Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to
Nice meeting to order. It is 5:32. We would like to welcome our new commissioners with us today. Matt Pope and Mike Kits. And with that, maybe we go ahead and have Planning Director update.
Thank you, Chair. We have Dan Karen's City Attorney online tonight. Dan's going to give us a quick overview on just some meeting procedures that we go through every time we have a public hearing, typically for quasi judicial hearings, applications, requests related to bias, ex parte, and
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, Dan's favorite. Dan, take it over. We'll
Sure. Do this. Thanks for having me this evening. This is sort of a primer that I don't think is super relevant to tonight's agenda, but it is relevant to an upcoming agenda item, the Marriott Hotel, I think December 1st set for hearing? Yeah, so there are three things to be mindful of that may arise between now and then that you'll need to disclose at the first public hearing on this item. Those are conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, and bias. They're all three very different concepts. Let me begin first off, ex parte contact, that's sort of the one of the easier ones. Under the Oregon land use system, you're supposed to render your decision based strictly on what's in the record, the information you have about the application that's in the record, and that way the applicant and all members of the public can respond to the evidence in the record that may affect your decision. So, ex parte contacts aren't prohibited, but they're a pain in the neck because you have to disclose them at the first public hearing opportunity after which they occur. And so an ex parte contact is anything that you learn about the application that's before you that you gleaned from outside the public hearing context. So if you do a site visit, that's information you learn about the application, and so you just need to disclose that at the first hearing so that people can rebut what you might have learned. There's not much to rebut about a site visit, but if you say the applicant took me on a trip to Reno last weekend and bent my ear about the proposal, there's a lot to disclose about that one. And the public is allowed to rebut that. Or one of the neighbors to the site buttonholed me at the grocery store, told me why is the terrible proposal? You need to disclose, you know, the substance of that context so that everyone can understand what you know about the application and rebut any misperceptions you get there. So that's ex parte contact. And undisclosed ex parte contacts can be a basis for undoing the decision if they're deemed to be material later on. So just be mindful, they're not showstoppers. They're a procedural hurdle that you have to surmount at the hearing. So each hearing, there will be a call by the Chair for disclosure of ex parte contacts. The second one is conflict of interest, and that is you have a personal financial stake in the outcome of the matter before you. The application, for example, is on property immediately next to you, and that could influence the value of your property. That's a direct financial stake in the outcome. The applicant is your brother-in-law, and maybe you're financially tied to the applicant. That would be a conflict of interest. You generally, you cannot have a conflict of interest merely because of you serve on a nonprofit board. So that's kind of a rare exception. It's not going to pop up in these hearings very often, but when people use the expression conflict of interest a lot, it's pretty narrow under the ethics statutes. It refers to an actual or potential financial stake in the outcome of the matter that's before you. Could be negative, could be positive, but it's a financial stake in it. And you need to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest. So when I say potential, a good example is in a legislative context, conflicts of interest matter. When the city was considering short-term rental regulations, some of the city councilors, one of them rented a room out in her house and would be potentially subject to these new regulations. Another person rented their entire house out to vacation, vacationers in the city would be subject to those regulations potentially. It was run up the flagpole with the Ethics Commission. They considered the text of what was before the council, the text of the STR regulations, and determined that it posed a direct conflict of interest because it would it would impact them in a financial, personal financial way. So that's actual potential. The third thing to be mindful of are biases. And another word for bias is prejudgment, and this comes up occasionally in case law. Oh, let me refer back to conflict of interest. You, it's up to you to figure it out and declare it. The same thing with biases, but it's up to you to figure it out and declare it at the public hearing. And basically, people are hard-pressed to force you off the matter, force you to recuse yourself because of those two things. It's kind of up to you. And if you violate the rules by staying on, it's on you. It's a personal problem. It's not a problem for the city, except it may jeopardize the decision. It could be a grounds for getting a remand back from Luba, but generally, I as the City Attorney, I'm almost never going to say you've got to recuse yourself. I can say it looks like a conflict of interest to me, or it looks like you're biased. But it's kind of up to each individual to make that determination. And so in terms of the bias, for example, prejudgment, it comes up, you know it when you see it. And where it has been the basis for a remand from Luba, it's where decision-makers have like published editorials in the newspaper saying, I would never approve this development. Things like that, kind of that you have prejudged the matter based on information or feelings that are outside of what's before you. Understand too that a lot of times people are appointed to planning commissions and are elected to city councils because they have expressed kind of strong feelings about certain types of development, maybe even some projects. And one, what I would ask any of you that has a potential conflict or potential bias is can you render an impartial decision based on the record, the facts before you, and the applicable approval criteria, yes or no? And so that's the fundamental evaluation you have to make each time you address these criteria. Am I so not happy with this application just because of? This came up, for example, when Walmart wanted to expand or build a new store. Some people had been so involved in opposition of Walmarts in the past, they could not, they could not be unbiased and impartial. So those are the three broad categories of things that you need to be mindful of. So going back to the first one, ex parte contacts, you may be subject to those as you wander about the community between now and December 1st and shortly thereafter. Just if people start talking about it, talking about the application that is or is going to come before you, just say, look, I can't talk about it. Any more than, you know, if you had a lawsuit in court, you couldn't go and talk to the judge at church about your case. You can't do that. You are sitting in these matters as a quasi judicial decision-maker. And so you just need to tell that person in the grocery store, I can't talk about it. Please don't. It'll jeopardize my ability to, you know, sit on the planning commission and participate in a decision. If it comes to having to, any questions about this, you can feel free to reach out to me or to Dustin about these matters. You know, is this a conflict? Is this a bias? Is this an ex parte contact that I need to disclose? And we can give you our opinions about it. But if it comes to recusing yourself, you would have to step down from the dais and either leave the room or sit in the audience. If you do that, you can then participate as a member of the community. You know, if you are, you know, stepped down for bias, you can go ahead and participate in the hearing as an interested member of the community. You cannot represent somebody else in that capacity, though. It's a personal thing. So recusal means you, you can't participate in the deliberation discussion or the vote. In fact, physically step down, go to the audience. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Do people have questions about any of these things? They are going to come up between now and December 1st.
All right, first, first time I turned that mic on, it worked, I think. Question, Dan, just on ex parte. I guess the, is the engagement in discussion the issue? Because it is, so if someone does come to us in the grocery store and they express their opinion, and we say, I'm sorry, I cannot, I can't discuss that with you because I'm on the planning commission, is that already an ex parte contact that we would need to disclose even though we haven't engaged, but they have expressed?
It's always a good thing to disclose that, especially if they, they launch into it before you're able to shut them down. Because there might have been, you know, somebody there witnessing this in the produce aisle. And, you know, I saw you engaged with that person about this thing, and don't tell me you didn't get an ex parte contact. So it always, you know, you don't need to belabor it if it was nothing, like the site visit. I visited the site. That's, that's it. You don't need to say anything more about it. Getting caught at the grocery store might be a little more protracted of a disclosure, but it may not, you know? So it helps to kind of shut them off before they launch into it.
And that applies to any person, if they're our spouse.
Your spouse. Yep.
Dan, in advance of the hearing, when we open the hearing, we ask, as just point of procedure, everyone to make their declarations. This is your opportunity that we program into each hearing, and then along with that, you all are, there's also a point where anyone is offered the opportunity to question you on what you disclose. So applicants or participants in the hearing may ask you, okay, tell me more about this. What did you learn? So there is also, once you declare and disclose the matters, there's an opportunity for participants to dig a little deeper, to get a good understanding of how, how does it impact the hearing before then?
Right, and that's an important part of it. I always try and force the issue. Once everyone has gone through the disclosure, right, you know, this person, this next, 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 next. Now, does anyone in the audience wish to question any commissioner based on this, these disclosures? Because in order for someone to preserve any of these issues for subsequent appeal to Luba, they have to raise it below. That's their opportunity. If they remain silent, that's it. They can't, you know, raise it later because they failed to preserve it during the local proceeding to give you a chance to cure.
But just to be clear, it's not particularly a good idea to engage in any social media back and forth.
I recommend you just don't leave your house for the next month.
Well, I mean, you can, if you, if you do, nobody knows but you unless, you know, people lurking on Facebook said, I saw you there a lot. So there's that. You could say, you know, I'm a member of this Facebook group and there's a lot of flaming about it. And if, so for example, people, if it's in, used to be in print news, you know, that used to be a thing. And I read the editorial, all 16 of these editorials against this Walmart store. The cure to that is those editorials get physically placed in the record of the application so that anyone could say, okay, this is what they gleaned. So you can sort of kind of do that with Facebook if you want to like print down the, you know, back and forth on the issue. It's a little cumbersome, but that's one way to document in this record of this land use proceeding what those ex parte contacts were. I would admonish all of you, though, do not engage. Don't, don't, you know, comment. So like when city councilors ask me, hey, can I attend the planning commission hearing and find out what's going on with this hotel thing? I say, sure. I mean, I'm not going to tell a counselor what they can or can't do. If you show up, though, do not engage. Don't, you know, stand up, ask questions. Don't express any opinions that people can later on say, hey, you, you sneered when the applicant said this. That's bias. You've prejudged this already. So don't express opinions about it until it comes time to deliberate and vote. Because you, basically, people may challenge you, and it could get ugly. I've seen in this city, the kind of, that questioning of people's ex parte contacts take on a cross-examination tone that lasted an hour. And it was, so you don't want to be that person. Zip it. Any, any, any other questions? The other thing is, in terms of impartiality, one way to know if you have, you know, close enough contact is if there, if you have any personal business or familial relations with any of the parties. So if there are people opposed, if it's like your wife is opposing us, you know, disclose that. If it, the applicant, you have a business relationship with the applicant, disclose that because it may, you know, for one thing, it, it may kind of taint the process. People say that it was, that you really did have a conflict. That's one of those potential conflicts. And so you need to think seriously, okay, if I, it's a former client of mine, I can be impartial, and opponents would say, no, you can't. You know, you, you, you know, earned a fee from that person, and now you're going to doubt their veracity of their testimony? I don't think so. So just be cautious of those business, familial, or personal relations with any of the parties. Just kind of watch that because it's, it's something to think about and maybe disclose. Okay?
Dan, thank you so much for
Keep a low profile between now and December 1st. But keep your eyes and ears open.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
Okay, on to the next matter, which is not a public hearing. This is, this is your workshop, so we can open it up. There is no disclosure. This is not a legislated matter. It is not a quasi judicial matter. It is really a workshop for planning commission to provide some input. We have a couple of people here who may want to talk, provided some input, and we have our consultant team online to give some information and testimony. So without further ado, we're on to the next matter.
Okay, then let us open tonight's work session for Module 4 of the Development Code Update. And we're going to start with comments from the audience. I, do we have a sign-up sheet? Or, I mean, I don't know if all of you are going to talk today, or just a couple of you? Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Mike Hendricks, start with you. For those who are watching remotely, please use the raised hand feature in your tool browser. Oh, you want to, yes. You want to tap a tap on?
Green is good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So thank you for giving me this little time. I know you have a lot of work to do tonight, and I appreciate it. I'm actually here with very positive things to say to you. I'm one of the co-chairs of a group called Dark Skies Gorge. And as you can imagine, that means we like our dark skies. We like it out there. We want to keep it out there. There's about 140 of us in a loose group. We've been trying to work. Kevin and Dustin have been great to work with on trying to talk about things. We're here to say it's great that Module 4, and thank you consultants, it's great that Module 4 has a section called Outdoor Lighting. As I think we all know, there really wasn't anything in the old code at all. And it's just terrific that it's in there. We're so happy to see that. Thank you to everybody for putting it in there. It's clear that the details aren't there. You all read it as well as I did. It's clear that there's language that has to be worked out that'll work for Hood River, but that can be done, and we're hoping to provide some input. And I know you're caring about it, too. You're all caring about it. So that still has to be done. But what we want to ask you to do, please, is support the idea of some good, strong language about protecting our night skies, and then we just go from there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Okay, and next up, I apologize, I cannot read your handwriting, but I know we want to talk about the fee in lieu of parking. It probably is. I'm so sorry. Please state your name for us, if you will.
First row, Buck.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for letting us go. First, the item that I wanted to mention to you is at the very end of your agenda, and by then you and I would both be going. So, um, at the very end of your agenda is the calculation of the requisite parking spaces for a development. Immediately following that is this in lieu provision. The calculation of the number of needed spaces is kind of moot because a developer can write a check for all of those required spaces. So what I'd love to see is that whole in lieu provision, in lieu of parking spaces, go away. Short of that, I'd encourage you to do something that would allow you to get at least a certain proportion of those required spaces physically, rather than just kicking the can down the road. It could be something like a development has to provide 90% of the required spaces, or or all but, you know, 20 of the required spaces, some, some sort of measure that, that doesn't allow what we have right now, which is, again, a developer can calculate the number of needed parking spaces and then write a check and walk away. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we have? Okay. Hey Tina, did I see you raise your hand in the back? No? Okay, cool. Okay, well, that I think is all of our input that we have from the audience. So next up, I guess we have our presentation. Take it away, Matt.
All right, I wasn't sure if Kevin or Dustin were going to start us off, but I'm happy to just jump in.
Sorry.
No worries.
I'm out of my sprints.
Should I just go for it? I can't hear Kevin or Dustin say anything else, so I, I will.
Matt, thanks for being here tonight. We've got a couple of new commissioners with us, including Mike Kits and Matt Pope. They're meeting you for the first time. With Matt tonight is Carrie Brennike, who's been helping who's been helping us draft code and they're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, we've got 10 items that we highlighted in the memo to you, but obviously a lot more language in that document than, uh, this, those 10 issues. But Matt and Kerry are going to run through those 10 issues. And of course you're welcome to bring up any other issues you're interested in discussing tonight. You've got questions about et cetera. So with that, turn it over to Matt and Kerry. Thanks, Matt.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah. So I will share my screen. And walk through this presentation. So we'll give you kind of a quick, some of this is what we've been doing, um, each time we've met with you, um, previously. So just give you a quick, um, status report on where we are in the process, um, what's coming up next. We'll give you a little recap on the issues or, um, elements of the code that we addressed in the earlier modules, which hopefully will be, um, particularly helpful for the new folks on the commission. And then we'll talk about some of the sources, um, that we use to develop the provisions that are in the module four that you got in advance of the meeting. And then as Kevin said, we'll walk through these 10 items. We'll preface each item with just kind of, um, reiterating what's in your staff cover memo about each of these items. And, um, a lot of these, you know, what we say is here's our proposed approach or intended approach. And what do you think? Does this make sense? Do you support this? So we're interested in that. But as Kevin said, you know, other comments or questions you have, we'll be happy to do our best to answer them um, and talk about them. Um, and, uh, for good or ill, I will do most of the talking tonight, at least in terms of the presentation. But I'll be looking for Dustin, Kevin, Kerry to jump in and add to what I say and also help with responding to questions. So that's the, that's what we'll do. So I'm just going to keep moving, um, but do let me know if you have any questions along the way. So I won't go into this, uh, schedule in detail, but what I will say is we've been going through this kind of iterative process of, um, looking at the updates to the development code in modules or kind of buckets. We're at number four of four. So we've gone through a lot of development code with y'all up to this point. Um, we've been meeting with you and then also meeting, oh, and the star I see is in the wrong place here. We should be under PC briefing number four. Sorry about that. Um, we've been meeting with the city council as well. So after we meet with you, we'll be meeting with them next week. Getting their comments. Um, we are getting ready to initiate some kind of brief online questionnaires for folks to ask them about some of the same types of questions that we've been talking to you all and council about. So that's getting started. And we'll be having some meetings, um, kind of focus groups, small group meetings, um, with a variety of, uh, interested parties in the community. And those are currently anticipated to happen in the first half of December. As well as having a focus group specifically with, um, Spanish speaking members of the community. That is going to take a little longer to organize and we're expecting that to be in January. We'll then take everything we've heard from you and council and everybody else and put together a combined revised draft set of code amendments. So a more complete, um, and updated, uh, version of the development code. Um, and then we'll go through, um, additional meetings with you all in council to talk about that. So that will happen in early 2026. Um, so that's where we're headed. And then we'll kind of continue to, you know, work through revisions to the amendments and ultimately take it through an adoption process, uh, likely probably going to be completed in, um, fall of 2026. That's kind of what it's looking at. We're probably about a month behind right now. So sorry about that, but we're moving along despite that pretty well, I think. I think that's kind of all I have to say about the schedule overall and just kind of where we are, but just appreciate all the, the hard work by you and council and everybody else so far. So, uh, so just kind of a reminder, and I'll say more about each of these on the next few pages, is that we've got these four modules. Actually, I think I'll just kind of cover these on the next slides because they go into more detail about each of these sections. So this is just noting there's four of them. Um, so module one, we looked at some general provisions in the code. Um, purpose and authority definitions. Now, we started looking at definitions, but we're going to have to revisit that again once we finish module four, um, because a lot of those definitions get updated along the way. A lot of record determinations and non-conforming situations. How staff interprets the code when there's, it's not clear what the code means and somebody asks for a staff interpretation and then enforcement. So those were things we looked at in the first module. Looked at a, a number of things and I'll say each module has gotten sort of bigger and thicker and more stuff to talk about. But module two was focused a lot on different types of procedures. So specifically there's different procedure types for reviewing different types of applications. We looked at that. We looked at provisions related to site design review as well as land divisions, property line adjustments. I will not read through all of these things. Some of these things are ultimately legislative processes like amendments to the zoning map or code. Um, but others are things that could come before you in an application process. A lot of the early ones are. So lots of different procedural issues and topics that we looked at in module two. Module three, we looked at, um, kind of, um, types of standards that are applied to development, but short of design standards. So these are, um, development standards, I would call them. So, um, what are the different zones that are applied and used there? What uses are allowed in different zones? What are some of the basic standards applied to those in terms of lot size setbacks, things of that nature? And then in a number of cases, there are some special use standards we looked at, um, as well as overlay zones. So your base zones as well as overlay zones. So those are the things we looked at in module three. And then module four, which is what you've got in front of you or, um, was, uh, provided to you in advance of this meeting and that we'll talk about tonight. Has to do with design standards. So a variety of different types of design standards. Um, how they're administered is one of the things we look at. What types of design standards are applied to how buildings and entrances to buildings are oriented, how buildings are designed? And kind of the full, um, gamut, I guess, of different types of buildings, residential, non-residential or commercial or industrial. Um, we, we're going to talk specifically about drive-through facilities. And then things like transportation and access and circulation, as well as landscaping, street trees, outdoor lighting. You heard comments at the front of the meeting about that. We'll talk about that. And then vehicle and bicycle parking and loading. So, so, uh, one of the commentators mentioned that as well. And then public facilities and the standards that are applied to those. So, and I, I know it's a lot of pages you got in advance and we're not going to go through that line by line, but we are going to pick out these 10 issues that Kevin mentioned and kind of talk through some questions related to those. But if you have other things you saw in there that you want to ask about, happy to talk about them. So I will maybe just take a quick pause before we jump into these discussion items and just see if anybody has any questions about what I've said so far, because there's a lot of talking. Probably I need to take a breath. So yeah, any questions about what I've talked about?
Hey Matt, I wonder if it'd be, is it useful to just sort of state the, the objective around this project in total? Like what, what are we just kind of zooming out? Just what are we?
Yeah. Yep. That is an excellent question. And sometimes I've had the kind of project objectives or goals at the front of the presentation. But I'll note a few and then we'll see if, um, Kevin and Dustin have anything to add. I think first and foremost, we're trying to make your development code easier to use, you know, so easier to use by applicants, by staff, by you all as you review applications and make recommendations or decisions. So just making the code easier to use is a pretty important, um, overarching recommendation. This is challenging to do in a code, but putting things in as plain a language as we can, you know, as we're updating these provisions. Um, just making it more easily understandable. And then another pretty important, um, objective is to ensure that standards that are applied to residential development, to housing are clear and objective. So they don't involve use of discretion. Unless the applicant has an alternative path and opts for something that's more discretionary. But otherwise there needs to be a path for review of a, of an application for housing that has clear and objective standards. So, you know, that means that those standards, I put those in front of you or anybody else, you'd all come to basically the same conclusion about whether somebody's meeting the standards. Um, so that's a, that's a very important one. Um, I think just from a process standpoint, we want to make sure, you know, we're addressing things that we hear about from people that are important. So having an inclusive and a, and a constructive engagement process with the community is another kind of overall project objective. And also I think I would just say, um, making the structure of your code a little more sort of logical. And finally, you know, this is the first time in a long time that you've gone through like a full scale code update. And so over the years, you know, things have been fixed here and there, probably a lot of times. But trying to create a more consistent code and for things that haven't been fixed, but have been talked about, making sure we pull those into the process. So those are things I would say about overall project objectives. And I guess I would see if Dustin or Kevin have anything to add to that.
Thanks, Matt. Um, just, uh, I'll circle back to the code audit. Obviously the first step in the process identified a variety of issues as Matt discussed, the types of things that we anticipating, uh, anticipated looking at early in the process, went through that code audit, identified a variety of issues. And those have been things that Matt and Kerry have been addressing as they've been drafting code. Yeah. And that, that audit, um, had a number of touch points from the staff, things that we had a hard time administering or things that we saw come up routinely as, uh, as obstacles or just issues. Development community, a number of interested parties, both in terms I would call generalized special interest in the housing world, in development world, uh, public engagement. So we had a public, um, uh, allowance to where, uh, it really provided that opportunity to say this, this doesn't, you know, similar to tonight, like these were things that we've heard, that were flagged. And then really, um, you know, a number of items that we saw as conspicuously absent. There's no cell phone provisions in there. This is a real, like, this cell phone thing might catch on, you know, like, so, um, having something in the code to directly address that. The code originally, you know, this version of it really showed up, um, in the eighties. Uh, it took a little bit of a makeover in the nineties, I believe, 1993. Um, there was a, there was a push to update it again. You know, we are now talking 30 plus years of management practice. Challenges of administration, difficult sites, lower tolerance, um, that I think is, um, that is a big deal. Um, you know, every, every inch counts. We used to measure in feet. Now we measure inches and that, and that I think is pressure tested the code to the point where the law used to allow more discretion. It doesn't now. So you have to have a code that really starts to lay out some very specific and predictable outcomes, um, for applicants and for participants. And I think that we've, you know, that's, that's one of the big objectives here is to arrive at that to the best of our ability.
Can I ask a question? What was the middle housing code rewrite you guys spent a long time doing? Was that, is that separate from this whole thing? I mean, that's fairly recent. Wasn't that a complete code rewrite?
Uh, just for, for that housing product. So, uh, within the, the code, there's 25 chapters. Uh, the middle housing, uh, code was an update and it became chapter 1725. And it's was a specific rule set built around that one housing type. So, uh, and when I, when I helped draft that, the way I said it was to have it almost self-contained. Because I knew the rest of the code had so many issues that I couldn't, I couldn't have those other parts of the code starting to enter in. So it really became kind of cordoned off. And so it, it really was tailored to a specific housing type and circumstance. Uh, it didn't go through and fix all the other issues with all the other housing types. And within that time, the city was in a position, um, to where it was only, I don't, it wasn't going to be required to do anything with middle housing. And since that time, even since we've changed it, um, the city is now going to have to do some additional regulations related to middle housing, not because of its own code, but because of the state law change that we need to, we need to wrap into this. So, uh, there's some changes in the, in the outside world that we'll have to adapt to. And there's some overlap there for our middle housing code and what the state refers to as middle housing. So one of the efforts is to, is to reconcile those two to make sure they're matching up. Uh, where there, where there's overlap and keeping them separate where we want to keep them separate. So, um, the, it's in process. It works. I think it works well. We will have to adapt to the changing world though. That keeps changing around us.
The middle housing ordinance was an entity in to itself. And what you're trying to do is bring everything up, everything outside of that up to date, which you didn't address during the middle housing because that was its own.
Yeah. And I think there's things that we could still update with that, you know, it's, it's never going to come off perfect, but I think your characterization is pretty good.
That was actually one of my questions as we get into this. Um, why don't, I guess I was believing or thinking I was seeing that we were folding chapter 25 into the rest of the sections, essentially doing away with that middle housing chapter.
I, I, although it's not complete, yeah, I think my intent is to, is to fold it in. It's not to eliminate it.
But it's going to be spread throughout instead of in its own.
We'll, we'll see what the organization looks like. You know, in terms of ease, you know, part of it is, I think it's easier because it's all enclosed in one. Uh, but we will have to reconcile a, a larger format, like depending on how the large format gets written. Does, does it make sense to have it in its own bucket or does the code read to inform it? Let's, we'll get the content and we'll work on the organization.
And that we, or that I put comments in, it doesn't seem to exist in there. It seems to, parts of it seem to be another, like in the, in, like in the residential design standard section, I believe I'm seeing part of what was in the middle housing.
There, there's certain, that's again where certain overlaps where occur, will occur. It may be to other things. So you have a section just on townhouses. Technically the state considers that a middle housing duplexes, that is something we're going to have to adapt. You know, I think we'll end up with a special section to maybe what is referred to as space efficient housing. To in, to avoid any confusion with the terms and the words that we use. So.
Yeah, I'll just say, we don't want to lose that good work that the city did on that. We're not intending to just kind of fold that or spread that throughout the code. We do want to retain a lot of those provisions and they are intended to promote not just middle housing, but smaller, um, units. Um, and so again, there will be additional regulations on kind of some of those other types of, um, what the state calls middle housing, but are a little different than what the city referred to as middle housing in that code updates. And, but I would just say, the other thing I would say is, again, we're, we haven't produced the, the updated complete code. So you're seeing things kind of all over the place a little bit. And that's just a function of this iterative process, but we won't lose that stuff. I think that's the main point I would want to make.
I guess then my, then my feedback, and I'll, and I'll let this proceed. Sorry and taking so much time. I do think that potentially keeping them separate makes it more difficult to use the entire product. So I mean, maybe we'll see as we, as we get to that final, uh, version. But if you're telling, if people are having to decide where they need to go, do I need to go to this to 25 or do I look up here in this? You, you're creating more complexity in the, in the product itself. So anyway, we'll see it as it gets fleshed out, but.
Yeah. Appreciate the comments. We're definitely, we've been having conversations with staff about this and, and we're definitely thinking about it. So yeah, appreciate the thoughts around that. Um, I will say one other quick thing, um, because Dustin reminded me of it. Um, that's another just sort of overarching goal of the project. And that is to make sure that the city's code is consistent with recent housing, um, rules and laws that have been passed um, by the legislature and or adopted by the state over the last several years. A lot has happened at that level. And so that's another important goal of ours. And this project is being funded by a combination of city money and state money. And so that's part of the reason the state's providing money to help pay for this is to make sure that we, um, achieve that kind of consistency where it's, where it's needed or required. So. All right. Any other questions before we jump into these, these 10 items?
Go ahead, Matt.
All right. Will do. So, um, first, just kind of, I forgot I had this slide, but really quickly, some of the source of information we've got here. So there's a couple of different model codes that we're looking at. One is called the Transportation and Growth Management Model Code for Small Cities. So we are using some of the provisions from, from that. So we are using some of the provisions from, from that. That model code is actually being updated right now. And so some of the provisions in that model code are somewhat outdated. So it's not always for every element of Hood Rivers code, the best thing to look at, but it does provide a really useful model for a lot of the things in Hood Rivers code. There is some additional model code work that's being done right now. ONA stands for Oregon Housing Needs Assessment. So there's a set of new rules that have been, are being developed in Oregon by the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development that will apply to housing associated with the, this Oregon Housing Needs Assessment set of rules. And so that code, a draft of that code has been completed. Both of those are being updated by folks in my firm. I'm not the one in charge of them, but I'm getting to benefit from the work that other folks in my firm are doing on that. So those are both sort of sources of information, obviously your existing code. There are some good codes out there that have been fairly recently updated and address those clear and objective standards requirements I talked about. And or, you know, have been, have gone through a fair bit of local review. So codes from Sandy, Oregon, Ben and sisters, we're trying to look at, you know, cities that have some similar characteristics to Hood Rivers, we're looking at these things. And then just some of the state legislation that I mentioned a moment ago and revised statutes. Some of those are very specific and they provide actual standards, you know, for the city to incorporate into their code. So, so those are all, and then of course, just a lot of discussion amongst us. And when I say us, me and Carrie and Dustin and Kevin and, and you folks. So team discussions and feedback from planning commission and council and others. So those are all the things that are going into this. So I did just want to mention that. And then I will jump into these issues. So we've got like kind of multiple topics per slide, but I'm going to cover them each individually. I'll say a little bit, really kind of repeat what's in the cover memo. See if Dustin or Kevin or Carrie have anything to add and then have, hear from y'all about what you think about the questions we're asking. So the first one is residential design standards. We included page references to your packet here. If you want to kind of look at these in more detail. So, you know, what we had to say about this is the existing code for Hood River has relatively few standards related to housing or housing design. And the standards you do have, a lot of those are in your planned unit development section, and they're not really considered to be clear and objective standards. So we recommend updating the existing standards and supplementing them or adding to them with standards that are clear and objective, that can be enforced and administered in that way. And relying on in large part, that ONA model code, that Oregon Housing Needs Assessment model code, because it's already been kind of vetted by the state and an advisory committee as being clear and objective. It addresses state requirements and it's just a pretty good baseline set of standards for housing design. And it includes standards that apply to kind of a full range of housing. So, um, that's our, that's our recommendation and we want to make, we want to see if that makes sense to y'all. If you support that based on, you know, this, um, my summary and kind of what you saw so far in the code. And I'll just again, sort of punt it to Dustin and Kevin and Carrie and see if they have anything to add to that intro.
Matt, this Kevin, I don't have anything to add. Thank you for the summary, Dustin. Carrie?
No, uh, really looking for your input to add again. What we compile will go into the creation of the final code. So you can have reactions, you can agree, you can have things that caught your attention or you thought were missing, conspicuously absent, conspicuously wrong. Again, I think the, the material you have is a little cumbersome, but what we didn't want to do is pull out so much of it that you didn't really see kind of the methodology and some of the options. So, um, there's something that you, you know, whether it's in there, whether it's not there, whether it's something you have to add based on your own experience, we're, we're taking notes and we're, we'll roll it in.
It looks like Bill Irving has a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I've got, I have a lot of comments on a lot of this. And I don't have no idea. I mean, it seems like that the level of the, the amount of material we have to cover seems a challenge with the level of comment that I think you see get made on this. There's one comment. It's the other part that's hard for me is I'm very familiar and I guessing a lot of other folks are with our current code set. And it's really hard for me to look, I mean, I know, I know the, I know where our current code set breaks. I know the, how to develop under it and what works, what doesn't, what are the pain points? When I, and when I look at this stuff, I've, it's, it's taken out of context for things like landscaping requirements, for example. And then we're, I don't know if we're going to have lot coverage discussions, like it, it, it would be helpful for us to, when we get into these specific detailed decisions to actually have our existing code set to compare it to, I think. So that's one comment. Building orientation, I, I look at all these and I'm like, why do we, why are we adding this to our code? I don't think we should be adding these, this type of design detail into our code set. I don't know. I mean, we, we found with our, um, we found with our ADU requirements, we found with our initial middle housing requirements. I mean, the more, the more requirements of we put for a developer under the code set, the less it gets used. And so I'm looking at this townhouse code and I'm like, do we care if the door is oriented to the street? Or if it's ninety degrees to the street on the front porch? I don't care. So, and I can go, I can rattle through all of this stuff and I don't know what the other commissioners think, but like, I would say four dot two dot one, delete two, delete three. You know, four dot two dot two. I don't even understand what that means, but delete it. We need a wall or fence in front of a house screening the front door from the street, like get rid of it. I don't understand why we're doing this. So four dot, four dot two dot three, delete.
So I think.
Four B, delete, four dot two dot four D, delete. Why do we care what, with our garage doors?
I, I think the issue becomes, and this is from your packet, is the, the code includes limited design standards, many of them that are not clear and objective that we cannot enforce. So you have the opportunity to to do something or to do nothing. You can eliminate all standards for design and, and that is, that is a possible outcome. However, absent anything that's clear and objective, you, you, you really have nothing. So, I mean, you, Bill, you, you're, you're right. You, you don't need to place those in there. But I don't think the, the staff's recommendation is that you omit any type of approach to residential building design.
Well, we don't necessarily, I mean, we have our development standards with our setbacks for garage doors and our storage yard setbacks and our building heights. I don't think we should be telling people which, whether their door can face the street or a ninety degree angle to the street. And I don't care if the townhouse garage door is twelve feet wide or thirteen feet wide. Like, I don't. So we have one commissioner opinion, I've, I would delete. I would, I, I don't think we should adopt this. I mean, maybe there's some sections of it, but holy, we're, we're just handcuffing the design process. So that's my comment on this section. And if we want to talk about specific items in that section, I can comment.
Mike, you've got a comment?
Yeah, I do. I think that if I had some of these design standards when I was building, a lot of my houses would be better looking. I think that it's not a bad thing to have design standards. I think it can go too far. And I think you can handicap a builder, but I think there has to be some design standards. And I think things like snout houses and I think there's a lot of things that, that should be written into this and not just throw everything out. Because I, as a builder, I've, I've made a lot of mistakes and I wished I'd had some design standards at the time. And I have been held to some design standards and I'm glad I was, because the development turned out better. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I, I think I, I, I believe both of those things are true. I mean, I, I think, you know, Commissioner Irving, Irving, what you were saying about, yes, we could remove them all, I think, but, uh, so design standards for residential design will improve the design of these structures. I, I believe that's true. It will improve the the quality of the neighborhoods. I believe that's true. It will probably reduce the volume of housing built because it does create some burden or some barrier or some complexity to delivering housing. I think, I think that's, that's a balance. And I like the idea of maybe we don't throw them all out. We have some that are really clear and have a clear positive impact are straightforward to implement in our general and consistent practices that people should be reasonably following. I'm, I'm kind of in the middle there. I see both sides of it.
I want to jump back in as a builder. I think if builders have, know what they're up against and don't have to go back and forth in a situation like this, if it's clear, they're not going to not build. They're going to build and they're going to be glad to build because they have a direction and they know that it's going to run through the system without it being an issue instead of arguing about it in front of the planning commission.
Well, I, I mean, I guess the issue is we're imposing for specifically, I'm talking about townhouses because that's the first section. We're imposing some criteria on townhouses that we don't impose on resident, on a, on a single family residential structure. So because we're doing a particular product type, do we care if the door faces the street or faces ninety degrees to the street? When we would allow the same exact thing on a single family structure next door? I don't think we should do that.
I had that question. Why are we not applying these to single family? Is that just a newbie question? Obvious, but.
Why do we aren't?
No, I think that's the type of input that like, I think that's fair game is, you know, if it, if it's good for a townhouse, if, if this is the sentiment that planning commission is coming to is that, yeah, this is a generalized standard regardless of type, whether it's a, a single dwelling, townhouse, row, multifamily, these are the characteristics. We are, we'll take that. Either good for all of them or good for none of them.
How you can logically make a distinction. I mean, how you can say it's good for, you know, multifamily, but not good for single family. So I.
These are, these are pretty organized, like we could just go through. You know, four dot two dot one, two. Orientation. Are we going to impose, do we care? Are we going to impose that? It, it mentions a, a front porch that has to be twenty-five feet in square area. In order for you to do something, have one at I'm not sure I, there, it doesn't seem like in any of these options, your front door can face something other than the street. In, in four dot two dot one dot two. Do people have an opinion about that?
Yeah, the, the facing the front of the street doesn't necessarily, it seems like a pretty obscure thing to be concerned about, you know, in terms of tighter lots. Would it not be okay to have the garage door be in the front and then, you know, have a door that's facing the, the border of the lot? That's not the, the front facing that's maybe like if it's, if the street is to the south, could the door not be facing to the east? So to speak, if it's the last house.
I mean, there's, there, there's a picture right here on what he is up and we have a door that swings in, in on a porch. But that porch has to be twenty-five square feet, I think. But i- if it didn't have a porch and if we wanted to have a walkway that came up to a door that approached the house at some angle or ninety degrees.
Yeah, and to, to me, in the, in the case of the orientation of the door, I would like to, there to be the availability of having not, not just front facing up to forty-five degrees, just because in the case of an end townhouse in order to, you know, maximize square footage, that that would be an option for the design of.
Well, that has to, there has to be an exception for, for a situation like that, obviously. I mean, that, that should be, that should be up to the planning department to be able to say, yeah, obviously that's going to be ridiculous. So you have, you can do it, you, you don't have to.
No, that's not the way it works, Mike. It's written down here, that's what we have to hold them to and they can't just get, we can't.
They can write in, it's up to their discretion, can't they?
That's not, yeah. I would, I, I don't know if we have enough votes, but I would move that we strike that section.
Okay, wait, Kevin, you have a comment?
Just a quick response to Mike, you know, as, as we talk about application of clear and objective standards to housing, I think that's what Bill is getting at, that we are trying to prepare a code set that does give the developer clear and objective criteria to work with. And we need to be cautious about introducing discretion in there. And it's just inconsistent with state law now.
I'm sorry, go on.
Well, I don't know if you want us to kind of respond our way in about the rationale behind some of these standards or not. We can, if you'd like us to, but I mean, we're happy to just kind of listen and, you know, and take down the comments. We are going to be reviewing the same set of standards with city council and we'll be conveying what we heard from you to them. So we won't, anything you say, hey, get rid of this, we won't get rid of it quite yet because we need to have similar discussions with other folks. So I, I just kind of want to make that clear in terms of the process. So I guess, you know, I'm going to a little bit rely on Dustin and Kevin to call on us if there's questions you want us to respond to or answer. But mostly we're here to, you know, hear what you have to say about stuff. I mean, the only other thing I'd add to that is some of these design principles really are about, and are about a couple of things. One, kind of improving the appearance, the appearance of housing, kind of back to what Mike talked about. And two, enhancing kind of community safety, you know, so that people can see what's going on outside their house. Things of that nature. So I'll just kind of toss that in there. But beyond that, I'll just kind of wait and see if people have questions for us and, and otherwise just listen to the discussion.
One thing I can add is, uh, we started with these design standards at the town home cottage cluster level. Because Hood River is not required to do it for all housing types. Other bigger cities have to do, uh, have duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes involved. And then I've worked in some cities where they also applied the same standards that duplexes that they're applying into single families as well. So there are options and there is a model code language for single family and duplex design standards. It is not put in because, um, it was not directed for us to consider putting it in based on what was, came out of the code audit. But we're saying there, there are options to include single family and duplexes and other housing type standards if desired.
For the purposes of discussion too, we're, we're not needing a vote on any of this stuff. We're just like, we're getting your responses to it. And, you know, again, we're taking notes on it. These are the things that we're going to convey. And, you know, again, planning commission has a whole bunch of experience on this in different areas. Like, we're looking for that experience to, uh, use the sounding board. So I don't need a vote on it. We're hearing, you know, concern about orientation, some design standards that, you know, the balance between creating obstacles and creating good design is, is what, what I'm hearing here. And concerns that overly prescriptive can lead to challenges. So there is overly prescriptive is an issue. We have to match that with clear and objective. But keep going, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, four dot two dot two, I don't understand it. I mean, I would say we strike it. I don't know why it's there.
Could you do us a favor and mention what page of the packet you are referring to?
Sixteen one sixty, I think.
Okay.
If you're just looking at the document, it's actually page nineteen.
Okay.
But, but yeah, I agree with Bill, four dot two dot two. That, that's pretty feels a little bit too too involved, you know, if, if somebody wants to, like, if you're. too involved, you know, if, if somebody wants to, like, if you're in the downtown area and you don't want to have a fence, you want to not have that barrier. Seems like you should be okay to not have.
Well, like this, the question I have here is like, are town, are townhouses su- subject to requirements to plant a street tree? Are they subject to our landscaping standards? And then why are we like putting some additional thing in here that we even need to have a comment? It's like, it's just seems like it with this whole section. If you're going to be meeting at least two of the following, like, it seems redundant because aren't you going to have to do one or two of these anyway? I mean, aren't you going to have to, I guess there's a question for staff. Are there landscaping standards associated with townhouses?
Uh, to be determined. I mean.
Okay. I mean, we have them now currently, right?
Well, it depends on how they're built. Two or less are lot coverage and not landscaping. So yes and no.
But there's a requirement, I mean, we do have a requirement to plant street trees. Where does that come in?
Uh, it can be in the, uh, land use and public facilities and, or excuse me, land division and public facilities. But that's not, that's different than on private property than public property. So currently you don't really have landscape standards on your townhouses. You have lot coverage and you have street trees. There's really limited in between there.
So, and, and there's limited room in between there. Right? So I, I would suggest we rely upon any landscaping standards in the city's street trees versus requiring us to put another tree in front of something that's, you know, close to the, it, I, I don't, I don't think. I don't know why we would have this section.
I'll say that I've worked with these rules in other cities and they weren't really an impediment to townhouse project I was involved in. Not really that unusual, I think.
Is that Steve?
This is Zach.
Oh, Zach. Okay. Sorry. Yeah, Zach. You're, you're not concerned about it?
I think Mike has a good point that if you have clear rules set out, that's, that's helpful to a developer. I understand your point about it being an impediment to have too many rules, but I'm seeing in these codes, pretty common things that I don't know. I think they're okay so far.
Is, um, I just, when I'm going to look at this, okay, the, the engineering public works is going to tell me what I have to put, I have to put trees in front of my house in the planting strip. Right? And I've got a limited area in front of a townhouse. And now I'm being dictated what I can do specifically with that. So. And it may not be appropriate. Yeah. So I, I guess I, my opinion is we should not have that, but.
Yeah. And I think we're going for clear and objective language. So I'm assuming we wouldn't have two different locations where, where somebody would have to look at and see what the, what the requirement would be there is that that's the purpose of, of this section.
Or at least if there are different sections to make it pretty navigable. Like if you have, if you need to go somewhere, you gotta go somewhere and it's going to be clear in direction that it's not a maze or quagmire. And I think that becomes in the organization. We don't want to test the string theory here of like, part of this is to make it easy to find the pieces and but I think the question here is, you know, we've relied on some discretion and good choices and compatibility and general intent, and that's no longer a playbook that we read from. You know, and that's where some of these things become real explicit because I can't say quality. I can't say consistent. I can't say high standards or, you know, sympathetic to the neighbor. Like we're, 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 we're really in a position now that where the state has said, you, you need to outline these things in, in pretty detailed way. So if you're going to require someone to landscape the front yard, you better tell them what landscape means. You know, that's, that's like, does it mean lot coverage? Does it mean gravel? Does it mean, you know, you know, what, what does that mean? I need, we're going to need to break it down to say, you know, this is one tree, you know, one and a half inches in this area. Like I'm, I'm not saying that's the magic to it, but at, at some point those are the, the parameters and that's the, the methodology and some of those things that we have to, that's the way we have to start organizing and, and it's really designed in a lot of ways, it's designed and paint by number. Because that's, that's what we can measure. Even if it's in a hearing, you know, until we provide someone an alternative path to say, here's the discretionary path that your, your great design can be flexible and you volunteer to go this way. You know, when we start doing these things by permit, when we're approving them, they, they gotta be pretty, they're going to be pretty mathematical in, in a lot of ways. So it may seem scripted and kind of strict, but that's, that's what we're being asked to do. Like that's what the state will require us to do. And so, you know, things will happen and things will happen organically and people will come up with good designs and people will come up with bad designs. But you know, there's, there's things that we, you know, we're going to have to, we're, if we're going to draw the line somewhere and make people do things, it's going to have to be real explicit. Or if it's not explicit, we're going to just accept the outcome. I mean, that's, that's really the, that's that balance there. And, and it's okay to do both. I mean, you don't have to script everything, but there's things that you want to make sure are done. They're going to have to be explicit. Otherwise they are left to good designers, bad designers to, to come up with and and, and it is a sea change. It's a real big shift and, um, you know, part of the reason why the code is important. But again, come, you, you're on page nineteen and one sixty-three.
Yep. Four dot two dot three, windows and doors. We're dictating on townhouses that they have to be a particular amount of gleazing or facades like someone can build a ridiculously ugly, single family box directly next door. I don't, I don't understand why we're applying these standards on townhouses. This is selective product type.
It's actually something that came up in, um, when we did clear and objective standards for middle housing, any middle housing that faces a street has this. So this is actually starting to follow suit with that clear and objective standard. Now to townhouses, I mean, you could have the same thing with single family as well. So.
Well, Phil, it doesn't sound like you would want them for single family.
No, I'm not. I'm just, I'm just like, I don't, we're, we've, the experience has told us that the more stuff we put in here, the more difficult it is and the less people use it. And this is pretty basic stuff. I'm, I mean, is everybody going to do this? Probably. But I'm just wondering why we're even putting it in there. For four dot two dot three, windows and doors. When I go down to you, four, four dot two dot four dot D. Garage width in a driveway in a, in a townhouse shall not exceed 12 feet measured from the inside of the garage door frame. Explain that to me, please. Why? Anyone?
It's just a standard and it starts to dominate the facade.
Right.
So if you have a 12 foot wide door or greater than 12 foot wide door, and you have a 25 foot lot, half yard lot, looks like a garage door.
Well, it doesn't have to be a 25 foot wide, wide lot.
But with townhouses, that's the typical width.
It's, you're right. It's typical, but if you have a 60 foot ride townhouse lot and you want to put a two car garage in one of the units, you're prohibited from doing that. So we're, you, you just, you're whittling out all these cases and Hood River is not flat and things are not square. So when we have all this weird leftover stuff and we have lots that are only 90 feet deep, but they're wider, like, it just doesn't, I don't understand why we would put this in here.
That was one of my questions, or maybe it's related, is that are all of these items, potential things that people can come to the commission and ask for an exception when they bring you their plans?
No. Because townhouses don't even come to the commission.
Actually, no, this, uh, part of our plan will have an adjustment provision in it um, that we have to provide, um, that there will be adjustments to certain design standards that we have to entertain. That's also a state law change.
So fifteen thirty-seven, this will be subject to it and I can just waive the garage door width because of fifteen thirty-seven if this goes in? Or is there a percent base thing?
Uh, I believe it's 10% on most standards for, uh, fifteen thirty-seven. Matt, do you know if that's the right number?
I think that's the right number that we can.
Yeah, 10% gets me to thirteen point two on the garage door. It's like, suppose you want a two car garage, 14 feet is 16 feet, like.
Can I say something?
All right. So is this stuff talking about if it's facing the street, the 12 foot maximum garage door width, only if it's facing the street, if it's around back, is it different? It's only if it's facing the street, right?
Yes, for a street.
Aesthetically, that would be, that would be nice to have. If the lot was 25 foot is a, is a typical frontage for a townhouse, they're 50 foot lots. So you have a 25 foot lot. So anything bigger than 12 would overwhelm the, the dwelling, in my opinion. What if you had a much wider lot and you wanted to put a duplex on there instead of a triplex? Would the, would the width of the garage door change if it was a a 30 foot or 35 foot lot? Or is it just, is it, is it specific to a townhome and that's it?
You could, you could absolutely do it. I mean, th- this is again, the opportunity to be like, I think it's an oversimplification. We should, like, this would be the comment that we're like, we want to make sure that when there are larger lots that are, have more opportunity for more unit that we, you know, don't use 12 feet as a flat foot, but use a, use a percentage.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm not advocating for bigger garages. I, I like, I like smaller garages. Bill's right. A lot of people have toys. They maybe want two cars. They're probably going to have toys in one car. But yeah, if it can, if, if a wider lot's going to have a wider duplex on it, you, you probably shouldn't be limited to a 12 foot. But, but for a smaller duplex, yeah, absolutely. I'd, I'd agree with that.
25 foot wide lot, five foot side setbacks. You got a 12, 20, 20 for building envelope. You have a three foot garage door, I mean, three foot man door. If you have two feet on either side of your man door, that's six foot of the facade. And here is you're limiting your garage door to 12 when it could be 14.
I'm looking at it.
Six foot is dedicated to pedestrian entrance, 14 foot dedicated to vehicle.
I don't know if you can get two cars in a 12 foot wide garage anyway.
You can, but you can do an oversized garage.
Depth wise or width wise?
I mean.
Yeah.
But I just want to put a 14 foot door or a 13 foot door.
Well, 14 would barely get two cars in there. I mean, I think you're talking.
Well, that's, I, it, it may not, but you could put, you could put a bunch of junk and still have it stick out and get your car into one half, that's, you know, two thirds of it.
Yeah. Well, it's just personally, I'm, I don't like big garage doors and snout houses.
Yeah.
Unless, uh, you know, unless it's in proportion to the dwelling. That's just, that's just me.
Well, we haven't said, I mean, this, this doesn't mean it's a snout. I mean, the, the man door can be in front of the garage door. This garage door. Can be recessed over and it can be, the garage door can be recessed from the man, from the man door. It can be recessed over an under, an overhang. I mean, we're dictating a lot of things right here without understanding the specifics of design of the site.
So do we have some sort of slight consensus on, I don't think about this whole section?
We're not having to vote on anything now anyway.
No, no, but I mean, yeah.
Take it, everybody should take this into consideration. Everything is being said by everyone.
And we, we will convey what we heard from you, whether there's a consensus or not, when we talk to the city council as well. So I mean, I would go back to what Dustin said is we are, we do want to hear your comments. We, you don't have to agree on things. It's great if there's consensus. If it's not, that's fine too. Yeah. So I, I don't think we're looking for you to reach consensus on these things from our perspective, you know, we, we just want to hear the comments. I, I think we've, I think we've heard at least up to this point, you know, what's important to folks, um, who have talked and will convey that. I, I also, um, I do want to just kind of reiterate what Dustin said a minute ago is we're on the first of 10 items here. We're happy to be here and talk about this stuff for kind of as long as you want within reason, but I, you want to have a sense of how, how much longer we're going to spend on item one before we kind of move on to item two and beyond. So.
What, okay. What's, what do, do we have a definition for multi-unit?
Five or more units is typically how multi-units defined.
Okay. Is that, is that a definition somewhere then?
That actually has now been introduced into state law.
Okay. Got it.
Which does not comply with the city's version. Just.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at six dot two and we're seeing design standards for multi-units and I don't know. I was trying to figure out what it meant.
That's what we're generally talking about. Five or more.
Uh, five or more. Okay.
Jeff Hoffman, I, I think it sounds to me like the commission is agreeing with staff, um, that there is, you know, an interest in replacing standards that can't be applied with some clear and objective design standards that also retain some design flexibility. So we have some work to do on the flexibility side to address some of the the concerns that we're hearing about here. Obviously, uh, I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Irving. It's tough, you know, they're challenging sites in town. Not every one is going to be developed the same way. So we've, we've got some work to do.
Yeah. I, I would just hate to see, you know, unit here, a unit there, not be able to be built because of, you know, something that's a little bit too prescriptive.
Well, and the, the other thing that it leads to is it leads to just building the same exact thing. I mean, you drive down Wasco and there's four, there's unit, four townhouse blocks that are just rows of them because they're identical and they meet standards. They met some standard at the time when we did them. When we had standards, right? Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Right? That you stick standards in and that's what you get. So. I'm nervous of them.
I'm a 50 50 split on this particular issue.
Yep.
I think generally you have a 50 50 split. Some flexibility reservations about being over prescriptive. We, that's enough for us to, to take.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next section? Or is that similarly situated in that it's just more building design standards? That, that people object to or don't?
It, the next, the next item is related to, um, non-residential building design standards, but it is about building design standards again. So I'm happy to do again, the quick intro and then see what you all have to say. It's a, you know, another chunk of design standards. So I will go ahead and just do the intro and then, you know, see what you have to say. So your current code has a pretty limited number of design standards for new commercial development outside of a couple of your zones, the waterway, um, waterfront overlay district and the downtown historic district have more of those standards. And so we are recommending, um, implementing some design standards in other zones for non-residential or for commercial buildings. These do not have to meet the same clear and objective requirements unless there's a residential or a housing component to the development. But we still want, so you know, you can have a little more flexibility here, but still important for them to be implementable, I guess. And, um, we will say that, uh, that model code, that transportation and growth management, uh, model code has really extensive requirements for these types of developments. We don't recommend implementing all of those. We recommend a more abbreviated set of standards than what's in that document. So we are trying to kind of slim down, you know, the number of standards to apply for these types of developments. We want to make sure there is some design flexibility. So that's the overall recommendation. And yeah, happy to hear what you all have to say about, uh, this section. This is in, um, pages thirty-two to forty-one of the, the code document.
I guess the only thing I would comment just at the highest level is I would be more, I would like to see more, uh, these to be more challenging and rigorous and clear and prescriptive because we're not dealing with not getting housing if these projects don't happen. So I'm, I'm emotionally you feel better, you know, applying, uh, more uh, criteria to the, to the commercial projects. And I think they have a, they tend to have a large impact on the community, um, and on the community that surrounds them. And so I think that's another reason to apply. that's another reason to apply a fair amount of rigor and specificity.
My general comments were that I felt throughout that the model code that you provided us as an example in all of these sections seemed reasonable to me with the exception of whatever other edits we've discussed already here. I don't know who what exactly deleting or updating to reflect the desired style of Hood River necessarily, like who are who, what that is, or if that is a thing that exists, or if that's what you're asking us to tell you. But I don't know that I could describe what all of Hood River wants in their, you know, requirements or something like that. But generally, I think it the code looked good to me.
What do you want to, you know, regulating entries, regulation, the low regulating the location of parking, roof styles, windows, there there's some common characteristics that that we can get into without scripting a, you know, a call it eleven worth style, you know, like that. There's there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas that that you can start to look at to make sure these buildings have common characteristics that aren't necessarily so stylistic that it's you know, high Alpine or art deco, you know, there's predominant entries, again, back to the building placement, black, back to the glazing, the amount of space on the first floor, you know, there's those pieces that are that are generally, you know, their themes and you see them throughout codes everywhere. So, you know, that's I guess our sound is less concerned about the rigors associated with commercial development than residential. They will still need design flexibility. You're not scripting the absolute single style. Multiple styles are okay, certain characteristics, okay. I'm just trying to like, not trying to talk human dude, I'm trying to draw draw this out.
That's totally reasonable, yes.
Materials, you know, you see material, there's typical materials that are characteristic in the area regardless of style, you know, the masonry, stone, architectural metals, wood, lap, you know, Pacific Northwest palette of, you know, of of colors and materials. We can we can fit that in there as kind of the the trend, a trend.
I got a question without having like, I mean, I did look at it. Is the in in some, when we got down into parking and some other stuff, I had questions about mixed use. And I'm not sure where mixed use falls into this. And are these non-residential building standards based upon the use type or the zone? Or the a combination of the use type in the zone?
Going to be use type, because regardless of the zone, if you have a mixed use building, meaning something with, and I say mixed use with residential and commercial, you're going to end up in a residential clear and objective standard. So it's going to have to fit a click like, if you have mixed use residential in the building, you're going to have to make that fit to a residential standard or a clear and objective format, if you will.
Okay.
Or the residential component of it.
So for this for pay set question two here, items for discussion thirty two to forty one. Are those for where to mix these buildings for hundred one or two on the on on your slide? I guess my question.
They fall under one because we're talking if if it's as Dustin just said, if it's a mixed use development with a residential component, then we need to apply clear and objective standards to the housing component or the residential component. Number two, we're explicitly asking about design standards for new commercial development or non-residential development. So in terms of the questions we asked, you know, the first one's really about residential, the second's about mixed use, but it's or about commercial, excuse me, non-residential. But as Dustin said, if we're talking about a mixed use building, then we do have to apply clear and objective standards to the residential component of that building. So and that, you know, if the residential can be all the way through the building, then it's to the whole building.
Okay.
That doesn't seem totally clear to me. Like I'm just wondering, so we have, like, we've got some examples up in the heights where there's, I don't, you know, there's three floors of apartments and residential or some commercial use on the ground floor, like a insurance agency or salon or something. I don't remember what's on the building I'm thinking of. What standards, you know, apply and how are they going to get applied to a building like that when we're talking about material use and things?
In that instance, you would have to be explicit in your mixed use building on those clear and objective standards. So in residential design, you should have a mixed use section that was clear and objective, considering a mixed use building. And that could only be there. So in this instance, in this section where it says the predominant building material should be characteristic of central Oregon such as brickwood, totally unapplicable and I could not enforce it. On that instance. So I would have something.
Yes, my question. So do we do we need to make explicit somewhere in here about how these standards will apply? I mean, it seems like I'm thinking of the buildings that we have had coming and we've had a couple mixed use buildings. Right? So I guess the question is, should we make it clear what how standards will be applied to them?
Yes, we need to and we will.
Okay. That was that was really my main comment on that section.
And anything else on the non-res? Sorry, I'm trying to read the room for for our to the benefit of our our parties online, too. Go ahead, Matt.
All right. So item number three relates to drive-throughs and drive-up uses. You don't really have current standards related to these uses. We just have some, you know, kind of context around this, which is that these are often in locations, you know, along larger streets and in kind of high-profile locations. They have impacts on pedestrian safety, on access, things of that nature. And so the question here is, and and so we've identified some potential standards that you could apply to these types of uses that are being used in other cities around the state. And so, you know, do you want to see us continue to kind of refine those standards that we've identified so far for drive-throughs and drive-up uses, but apply them to those types of uses?
Yes. Yes.
Were you taking a vote now? I guess I guess some people are talking about it. Some people are are not with.
Agreeing with whether he wait, okay, what did I say?
Yep.
Are you, is it time to take, ask some questions about this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go for it.
I thought I read that there was something about a twelve percent grade. It was a minimum or the maximum you could have going into a drive-through. Did I read that wrong? It doesn't really seem.
That's. I'm I'm navigating to that section.
I don't know where I did right now.
That, yes, it limited the the queuing areas to a maximum with twelve percent grade.
Yeah, that's like not safe. I mean, six percent is not safe for a drive, in my opinion, for any kind of drive-through situation. That's really steep. But whatever, I don't know. Maybe there's engineers say it is safe.
Yeah, I I think there's you have nothing now. So, you know, if you think it's putting something in there, I I would. No, because I can't ride a bike up twelve percent. So. Yeah. What what you have is nothing now. So I think the the intent is this is a a use that is high-profile, typically highly corporatized architecture and a lot of traffic. And often to some of our people, a lot of lights and a lot of activity, it warrants a little more scrutiny and maybe some prescriptive look than than what we have now.
Yeah, I'm not, all I'm talking about is a grade of the driveway going up to it or through it.
We got, we got it. Ever everyone else comfortable with putting some standards in there and? Okay. Matt, you're up.
Next one. Okay. So going to talk about the next three items in here and start with transportation access and circulation standards. And these are in kind of a couple parts of the document, forty three to forty seven and fifty one to fifty five. So you do have standards related to these things in your code now, you know, the the intent is to to some degree, limiting driveways in terms of both not reducing mobility and also not impacting pedestrian safety as much or reducing on-street parking to a degree. So those are all kind of the some of the impacts that more driveways can have on what's going on around them. So we are recommending updating your access management standards, using some of those provisions from the model code to balance those things, to balance, you know, the need and ability for people to access property. And we wouldn't, you know, eliminate access, but we want to kind of limit access to some degree to make sure we're balancing access needs with those other needs, pedestrian safety, on-street parking, you know, ability to have street trees, et cetera. And so, you know, want to check in on your thoughts on that, that approach generally. And any specific items you saw in this section that you had questions or concerns about?
I think for one other feature, too, this came up. This is really, this section appears in two different titles, the land division title and the zoning title, helping merge them into one kind of single area that helps talk about access management, whether you're creating a partition or not, is I think is a useful, useful approach that that this starts to consider. So rather than have them spread out fully outside of the zoning code, you know, I think is one, one of the remedies we're hoping to use to make this thing a little easier.
Could can we talk about the spacing, access spacing, I'm on G, page forty five oh one sixty, which is forty, I don't know what page of the PDF?
Yeah, yeah, what what comments?
Well, I'm trying to understand clearly. So the other thing that gets really messy here is that we have all our engineering standards. And so you ain't going to try and develop something you have one set of standards in one place, one set of standards in the other place. It's G one. What what does that say? As measured from the sides of the driveway. So that's two driveways have to be that twenty two feet apart, not including the apron? Or what with the ramp on the sidewalk, what's that called?
Two feet of straight curb.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Not not including the, what do you call it, the wings or approach?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
The point of that is to allow there to be a parking space between those two driveways. If you if if they get smaller than that or very much smaller than that, then you're eliminating the ability to have any parking.
This isn't our, this isn't our current code set, correct?
Yes.
And we have I I guess my my comment is, and and this is on the same property. Correct?
Not necessarily. On the same street or block base.
Yeah, they could be separate properties.
All right. So what, how how does I don't I don't necessarily know how we do this now, where you know, we got plenty of driveways that are less than twenty two feet apart that exist currently in town. So how does this work in the event of redevelopment of one of those properties?
Oftentimes, we'll end up with a design exception from engineering or a redevelopment of a site that is legal yet non-conforming and the redevelopment makes it no worse.
So that, right, so you you can get the design exception from engineering for some of their standards, but we don't, do we have a mechanism in this to get a design exception in our code set? How does that work?
It says it within our code set, exceptions may be made by city's engineer.
Got it. Okay.
Does, yeah, it's it's written in there. So that's actually on page forty six.
Okay, I I know I was, I've used that exception. I'm just trying to figure out where that was and if that was remaining. Okay. Is is twenty two the right number here? Is that, do we have any other?
You have a different number to suggest or are you just asking where it comes from?
I would might throw out twenty or as a as just a question, right?
Twenty two is pretty, that's a pretty standard number. It's based on the typical or not even typical, but the potential length of a vehicle and trying to provide a little bit of shy distance on either side of it. So, you know, people don't park perfectly. So you're trying to maintain enough space for a vehicle to park there. Recognizes that vehicle length varies, but twenty two is pretty standard. You can use something less. You're trying not to sort of tighten it up so far that people end up, you know, going into the apron of the curb cut. So it's there's no, you you could vary these things by a foot or two. You wouldn't want to vary them too much, but that's kind of a best practice number.
Okay. I mean, we have eighteen as a required depth for a parking space and certainly.
That's because, yeah, somebody pulls into that parking space, they pull up to their front. So you don't need the shy distance when you're parking in a parking space versus when you've got driveways on either side of where your vehicle is. And that's the idea behind a somewhat wider space than what you've got for your typical driveway space within a parking lot.
So Bill, just for example, the internet has told me a Subaru Outback is sixteen feet in length, twenty two feet will give you three feet on either end of it between a driveway. So a Rivian will be larger.
Well, that that that's exactly my question is like, I mean, my Ford E three fifty is nineteen and something feet twenty. That's a giant vehicle. Right? And, you know, AI is currently told me the average car length in the United States is fourteen point seven feet. So twenty two seems like a lot.
Again, we can go lower if that is a best practice kind of number you.
That's what that's why I was asking the question is, that's what we had in our code set.
And that's thing is from us, anyway.
What in in twenty two is in other code sets?
Twenty two is what we typically see in other codes.
Okay. We just put a put a put a star next to that and ask a question.
Matt, keep going.
Yeah, okay, thanks, sorry. The next item here is is landscaping standards. So Kevin mentioned earlier that, you know, we had done this code audit and the code audit actually also looked at previous audits or reviews of your code. And one of the things pointed out in a number of those is that your landscaping standards as written that apply to, you know, a lot of types of development within the city really are not clear and objective. They especially as they apply to residential development, they need to be made more clear and objective. So we are recommend use recommending using at least the model code standards for landscaping as a starting point to provide some more clear and objective standards for landscaping and just better, you know, address impacts of development, promote climate-friendly, sustainable development practices. So that's sort of the general, general goal here. But and first and foremost is to make sure you've got some clear and objective standards that can be implemented without a bunch of discretion for landscaping.
I can add into that. There's there's landscaping standards in the subdivision.
I can add into that. There's, there's landscaping standards in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, and this is putting them all in one spot. To keep people from having to go back and forth.
This overlap with the townhouse landscaping we were discussing earlier?
It, it could, I think with, if you wanted to provide an option for this for larger projects, certainly we would want it to harmonize. So in this instance, you see applicability shown in here. You know, we, we could relate it to multi-unit, mixed-use, commercial, industrial, change-of-use. So you could, you could list that. This is really set aside for those pieces. You know, but, but we would absolutely want to be explicit of what, what does this thing apply to? You know, townhouse could have their own standards built into the townhouse section. We could roll it into here, but if we, if we did roll it into here, we would have to be very careful about being explicit about what applies to which, no.
Yeah, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we will be addressing as we're combining, producing the combined code that I mentioned earlier. I mean, you know, folks who have mentioned this are right. We are looking at some of these things somewhat out of context because we don't have the whole thing in front of you because that would be an even longer discussion to put it all together in one piece first. So yes, I mean, the short answer or what Dustin said is we will make sure that these do harmonize and that it's clear where we've got standards that apply to, let's say, all residential development and there's additional standards or not on top of those for townhouses, for instance, that code will need to be clear about saying standards in this section apply to landscaping and these additional standards apply as well, if that's the case. So.
The, in the blue, there, there's a couple of different highlight colors in here. Blue is determined to be non-clear and objective or a question. And then there's like, there's a bright blue or a teal blue, and then there's a light blue. I'm looking at bright blue or the teal related to watering, six page sixty-nine of one sixty.
Teal was supposed to be the not clear and objective language should be removed, right? Or, and it is being removed, this, that isn't. Or things that need to be addressed.
The blue highlights not clear and objective.
Right. And some of those things we just highlighted. So where this came from sources that we thought, oh, this is generally a good model, but some of these things need to be adjusted to be sure they're clear and objective. We highlighted those specific items.
And the section you might be looking at is that your current code is, what's the stuff you see in just the blue writing, this stuff out of your current code that's left in there for your context of this is, these are your current standards. And then where it's highlighted in there is where we were showing you where they are not clear and objective.
So your, your color is indicating location, highlights calling out often from our code, not clear and objective, not enforceable.
So I'm rolling through pages like seventy-five, seventy-six, like that's blue, that's our current code and it's also in a light blue? What, what is, is that?
That, that's model code. So once you get to seventy-five, it's light blue, it's not the teal highlight. So that is, that, that's model code. The other, the other one above is stuff from Sandy in there is, is really the more than non-clear and objective. So model code, yeah, mixed with, mixed with Sandy.
Yeah, it's, it's a little confusing because when we made a comment, it decided to like highlight the whole section when we made a comment and which was probably just, it's for some reason, the other system made things blue and that was not quite the way it showed up when I did it, but.
This is, this particular section for me was really hard to figure out and go through because it seemed overlapping and conflicting and confusing and highlighted and not highlighted and I think I would need to see something cleaner to get an opinion in this section.
That's helpful, Bill. That's good. So from, from the report, recommendation is to update the standards, taking some of the cues from the model code. You know, promotion, here's still promotion of climate-friendly and sustainable places and overlapping some of our, our stormwater and kind of small format developments that, that really we have no, like, are completely absent, you know, runoff, stormwater management, low-impact development, shade, urban heat island, all these things never existed when our code was written. There's some things and overlap to the comp plan and some of those, you know, kind of city policies that I think could be better articulated in regs. That have to be clear and objective. So back to the, back to that theme. So that, that's our recommendation as we go a little further in articulating that. And I think, yeah, absolutely. It's again, back to the goal of it needs to be usable. That's an organization and refinement. This one did get a little, it's a little unwieldy because we didn't want to eliminate everything and refine it before you got to see the refinements. So back to Commissioner Irving's question is like to see the body of work needs to be organized in kind of one voice.
That's the other comment I have on this, on this, on five, and then on six, we're going to go into on tree preservation is just around the whatever staff believes is enforceable. I think that's maybe a question based on current staffing for code enforcement. Are you, are you going to know if a tree dies after a year and is replanted or not? So I just, just to, I guess, take that, I'm sure you will, take that into consideration as you're writing it up, just to make sure that it is.
Well, just on paper, the most. Yeah. And that's, you know, part of that is the, the plans that are required, you know, not only like, do you have a good inventory? What are the conditions? You know, right now in tree preservation, it really shows up in land division. It doesn't show up in the commercial stuff or in the commercial site plans. It says where feasible, so it's right off the bat, I can enforce it. So I think, you know, getting to six, it's, you know, the basic question is, do, do you believe having an enforceable tree preservation or mitigation matter? Should that be in the code? Like that, because right now it's, it's limited in its application and it's even more limited in what I can enforce. So you know, having that in or out is, is, is.
Are we on six right now? Or do you jump it, do we jump aheads?
I think we kind of bobbled back and forth.
Well, the preservation part of trees is there, if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, but if someone had a lot or it would any size lot with trees on it and they could go and cut all the trees down in the city limits, they could clear cut the lot without anybody saying anything about it. That's totally legal. But if they came in or if they came in with a plan to develop that lot, then they'd have to do a tree survey and preserve trees on the lot. So you have nothing to keep people from cutting all their trees down in the city limits on any water or any amount of land they have, like just go clear cut anything?
Today, correct.
Okay. And is there any way of mitigating that or not? Is that what you're saying? You have no way of?
Yeah.
Enforcing anything? You, you just can't do that? It's just.
Well, I, I don't have those tools right now, but they are available. So I've definitely worked in a municipality that postdated that and said, you know, if you, if you clear cut and you come in within a certain amount of time, we, we will recognize that. That's actually even more enforceable now because of this, you know, of Google Earth and the technology and availability and really some of the aerial photo and information that we have going back to, you know, actually readily accessible for the past, call it sixteen, seventeen years. So we will have a good opportunity to look at a canopy if somebody clear cuts in advance and we could post it to say, if you do this, we will back, we will backdate to five years or something along those lines.
Yeah, I'd like.
Try to get out in front of that disincentive to say, you know, we want to, we'll cut before we, before we apply.
Yeah, I've seen it done, I've done on both sides of it and I think you need to be able to, to, to keep that from happening one way or another. I don't know what it would take, but it's a, it's a pretty good loophole, in my opinion.
As long, as long as there's general, like, again, to the preservation is not in there or is not defensible as it is now to do that and consider disincentives to cutting before application.
That's, that's clearly a workaround. It's not in the spirit of the code, right? So I think it would be nice to fill that gap.
Yeah, have some controls there.
Got it. We'll take that into account.
All right. Yeah, I think that did pretty much answer the question we had on number six there. So I'm gonna bump to seven and eight. So item seven relates to standards for fences and walls. And so the, there are standards in the, the model code we've talked about for fences that are different than the city standards. We are recommending pulling some of those standards in from the model code to replace some of the city's standards, including reducing fence height along streets from six to four feet in residential zones. So that's one recommendation and just again, generally updating some of the current standards with some of the standards from the model code for fences and walls. So wanted to get your thoughts on that one. And Dustin, anything to add to that one? I want to make sure I got that one articulated right.
Yeah, back to fences and walls right now. There's, there's only a couple of things that you have, but I think what, what we see is there's, there's a big opportunity for some, you know, probably some misses and, you know, the, the one thing that we'll look at and we'll make recommendations on is, you know, we don't want to see proliferation of fence canyons, especially along public walks. You know, six-foot chain link fence in your neighbor's front yard against your house is totally permissible. And maybe with some concertina wire. I don't think that's necessarily what the code is intended. But I think, I think it's, you know, without overstepping the, the purpose of this and would be something to say, you know, that would be a good opportunity to address what we see as a code gap. Two issues in particular, just that I think about.
Let's be clear on this. You're talking about if someone builds a house and they have a ten-foot setback from the sidewalk and, you know, the, you can't build it, you can't, between the sidewalk and their house, they can't put anything over the, higher than four feet.
If they want, if they want to screen themselves from people walking by looking in their windows, they have to keep it at four feet.
Four feet.
Okay, which wouldn't work, obviously, but is it the alternative to that? They could like a Roabar Brevity or?
Sure, we, we, we don't have a landscape setback except probably where some visibility and site triangles.
Yeah, obviously. Okay. So that, that's an option for people.
Yeah. Might we have something similar with retaining wall?
Well, you have to get engineering anyway, anything over four feet. So it's kind of the same. Yeah, okay.
This would also be, you know, alongside yards and corners, rather than having the fences come all the way out to the sidewalk, which feels like you're walking against the fence. Giving people an opportunity to do their corner and provide that privacy, but probably stepping it back and allowing a little bit of shy space between that where you could landscape and it, and it gives a little bit of a, again, it, it's the balance between.
Yeah, I know.
I gotta, I gotta comment on page ninety-two of one sixty. C one, A two, which is a fence may be constructed to a maximum height of six feet or the fences of open chain link or other see-through composition that allows ninety percent light transmission. So we are allowing a chain link fence in the setback to six feet.
On the frontage?
Am I reading that correctly?
I caught that too. It seemed weird.
That two fences have all sections.
Yeah, I think this is where we, we, there's two now because there's a couple of options and directions for you to go. Getting your feedback on those. So that's where.
So you can put, scenario, I would just describe, you can put a six-foot chain link fence.
Four feet.
Off right on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't think that's, that's not what, what, what we intend, but again, it.
Okay, well, that, that, it seems like facilitating proliferating when someone wants a six-foot fence to make it a chain link fence in the front yard is not what we want.
No, I, I agree.
Right. Good. This is, these are the reactions that we're trying to get out of you.
I caught that too, I'm quite sure.
The next one I have is concerned with is that same page B, which it limits your fence height based upon how far your neighbor's house is from the property line. Most setbacks are only five feet. So if your neighbor's is only five feet from the property line, then you can only have a side of five-foot-high fence on that side. Which doesn't make sense to me. We've got a lot of places where houses are pre-existing, non-conforming, don't meet setbacks and someone's two feet from a property line and maybe you actually want some, to screen that neighbor. I don't, I don't think the proximity of your neighbor's house to the line should dictate how high your fence could be on your property.
I think six feet is, I think five feet is too low. I build houses very close to each other and people, you know, when people look in each other's windows, he needs some privacy. I think five, six feet is fine between the houses.
Between the house, yeah.
So and.
Right, that's my opinion.
Regardless of, and I guess non-dependent on the, Bill, I think what you were saying is make your fence choice independent of your neighbor's property.
Yes. That's, that's this, I would strike the, except the fence shall not exceed the distance from the fence or the wall to the nearest structure on the adjacent property. Like that last, strike the accept portion. So correct, what Dustin said.
I remember what you said.
I think, I think Bill, Bill doesn't want the, the neighbor's house to dictate what your, what your own fence could do on your property.
The, the way this reads, Mike, is, yeah, if the neighbor's house is only three, three feet from the property line, then you can only put a three-foot tall fence. Which doesn't, that doesn't make sense. Another question on ninety-three E permitting. That sentencing to, the first sentence there. What, I guess the question is, what do we, what can we regulate? What are you intending to regulate? What process does someone have to go through to put up a fence?
Uh, this is not a land use approval. This would be a permit. You gotta get a permit.
Do you have to get a building permit right now? Like a building permit?
It's on the height of the fence. Yes, uh, some fences over six feet tall do require them now.
Yes.
But that, this would require some level of permitting, maybe a zoning check-off to say this thing is located at this location. So type one would be like, a ministerial review requiring some level of inspection and approval.
You're allowed to have with this fence over six feet now with a building permit?
There, you, you can, but it, it will dictate certain locations. So the location will change based on, if it's over that tall.
I didn't know that.
When I'm reading this, we should, that is, is the way this reads is that for you're going to be required to get a permit to put up a fence. Is that right?
I think what this is, is this decision that needs to be made.
Yeah.
Is it, do we want, is a type one approval required or is it not required to put up the fence and then it's complaint-driven? That's a decision, Hood River will need to make.
Is there, is there no, no ability to, to implement criteria without permitting? Without making per, a permit required, we, we can't specify criteria.
It's, you can, it just, it sets up for some pretty difficult conversations when someone is not required to get a permit, even if it's like a checkbox permit, and they put up a six-feet fence or a fence that doesn't comply. And you go out there and say you didn't get a permit and now you have to take this down because it doesn't, it's a code enforcement issue that is bad operations. So it's very difficult to start dictating design standards, if you will, or zoning standards without some check-in on something like this. You can put it in the code, but if you're not asking someone to submit. Um, you can put it in the code, but if you're not asking someone to submit, you're kind of relying on. It, you're, you're, you're hopeful that they they get it right and you have a hard conversation if they don't.
Sounds a little risky, but I think.
Need to set some standards and have people know what they're allowed to do and and like you said, to go back after the fact, it's. That's not a pretty deal. I've dealt with that before too.
Do it. Staff have to opinion on this topic. I mean, it seems like this is a lot of paperwork and process. That. Seems like people do offenses kind of often.
I would rather do paperwork than have somebody cut down the fence that they put up um, over the weekend. Which becomes even more paperwork than probably all the fences. It becomes the discussion I have uh, to take down one that wasn't, didn't require a permit and got put up.
I I do like the idea of having some, especially along the streets as it, as it's asking in in the section seven. To reduce it from six to four where where it's in the residential zone along the streets. Um, and like you said, just having a checkbox permit uh, seems. Pretty reasonable.
What's the process for a quote unquote checkbox, checks checkbox permit? How long does that take?
It could be as simple as an online application. Uh, with your plan and just it allows people to read the rules. It's a simple form.
Yeah, I just concerned with anything taking more time or more money. But.
I think you.
Having someone read, read what's, read what's, what's, what's required and. That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I heard from staff is this would reduce time and money spent by the city. Um, compared to somebody coming in after the fact and having to take something down.
Well, I'm concerned about the time and money of our population.
Yeah, I, again, I think we could make it a pretty.
More more process trying to do something. So I'm just. Streamlined.
It, I, I think we would be looking for something that is, is the least amount of rigor, but still effective. And of course it takes more time. Like if you have to ask permission, it's going to take more time. That's absolutely. So we will. You know, we're, we're trying to, I think this would be intended to be the most limited assurance that people knew what the regulations were. And we had some level of expectation that, that we understood that they knew what they, those were and. And we were kind of moving in the same direction.
I think Bill's mainly worried about the time, the time issue. Like, did you come in and ask for a permit to do a. A fence and then a month later it comes off the engineer's desk or the city's desk or is it?
I mean, is there any way to put it behind?
I.
Cause ideal.
I think the building permits got much less time than that. I also don't think it's an engineering matter. I think that's, that's the first thing is.
Sometimes.
Yeah, this should not be an engineering feat. This shouldn't be a structural feat. If it's under six feet or under. Um, shouldn't even be a building matter.
We're looking at the same week. I mean, is there any way you've been saying, is it a month? If it's a month, ridiculous. Like if it's a matter of a few days or something, then.
I think, I think the expectation would be a short turnaround, not a month. I, I don't, I haven't, I haven't done one yet.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's Bill's main concern, I think.
Yeah.
Putting owner on the owner and making it an onerous.
If we had a great application, I would love to do it over the counter.
Yeah, there we go.
Some, some concern about the, about, about this, I guess. It seems, um, I mean, uh, two, two questions here. One, are we, or do we need to add more strict criteria? Or reduce the types and scale of fences that can be built? I guess is the first question to answer. If we're going to do that, then we, then it looks like we probably need a process to permit them. We don't, if we don't take that action, we, is there a problem now that needs to be solved? Like, do we feel like current? Current fences going up are inconsistent with character of neighborhood and like, what's the problem that we're solving? Making fences of certain type or form.
Well, I can tell you examples of fences right now.
Okay.
Several spots where it's really inconsistent and really ugly, in my opinion.
Okay.
And should, should be regulated or should have been.
Client with current code.
Uh, yeah, that's why, that's why we're, yeah, that's why we're changing things or trying to.
Yeah, I, I think we, we see areas that they're very much permitted and allowed. Or unregulated uh, with some, I would say unintended consequences. That if we looked at the circumstance and say, you know, if everyone followed suit with that, would we have a very undesirable outcome? I think that's, we've seen this show up and um, I think it's, it's worth bringing to your attention.
I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with uh, that Belmont like curves where I, I believe. Mike, you had a, a project there, um, the fence that separates Bo addition from Belmont. Um, that kind of a thing. I feel like if you're on, on that side of the road and you're a pedestrian. Walking towards town, you're, you know, you have like five or six foot tall uh, fences. Which i- if you're, if you're on the, say, the west side of that street, you know, there's trees between the, the street. And there's a sidewalk versus on the east side, it's, it's just this big wall and. Not really a sidewalk, but, but that's, but that's, and that's also the interface between county and city right there too. Yeah, and it's the, it's the backs of the houses too. That's the only thing that for me comes to mind and like, you know, obviously this code is more so for future fences and. Um, yeah, if, if it could be something that's like over the counter, like I'm getting a permit to cut down a Christmas tree. Type of deal that would be, that would be a- about the extent of regulation.
Or just letting the people know that what, what they're, what's expected of them in the way of building a fence. I mean, that would be and and they sign off and say, yeah, I understand this and then there's no excuse if they go out and build it wrong. That's, that's pretty simple too.
I'm just really disappointed I won't get to build my combination straw bale tarp barbed wire fence that I planned to.
Do it now.
But, fine.
Get, get out and build it right away.
This is the, uh, we, I think we're trying to, again, can't say it's over the counter, but I think we're looking at a, a limited. You know, the, the limited amount of, of application is necessary to get the job done on, on something like this.
Just looking at the retaining wall section there, um, says that you can't have more than four feet of retaining wall. So. Un- under this code that the cooperative housing retaining wall, would that not have been allowed?
That's a great question. Uh, that's one of my uh, retaining wall that often comes to mind. That retaining wall is actually in the right of way. Um, so we could, uh, you know, maybe before design standards are up, we, we could have an opportunity to discuss the uh, the success. Or lack of success of that, in your opinion.
This is the ultra block wall on Sherman, West of thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the public right of way.
So then they would.
It was.
Built it.
The standards did, the standards didn't apply in the right of way.
It, I wouldn't, I don't want you to give up on that issue because I've, it comes to my attention often, so. Um, we, we can, if, if you believe maybe that the standard that applies to private property would also be possibly. Useful in the public domain. Um, we, I, I'll mark that down if you want.
Uh, just kind of one more thought on the kind of the uh, complexity of like walls and fences. I, I think I would be cautious of anything that requires real specific and clear knowledge of um, lot boundaries. Uh, just because there may be some ambiguity. You don't want someone having to get a, you know, survey in order to put a fence in. I mean, you may, but I don't think we want to. That's too onerous.
Yeah, that's certainly on them and, and encroachments happen and, and that's something that would be.
Yeah, I just, I'm just.
Disgust between the neighbors, certainly.
Yeah, I just worry about that going through a permitting process and then there being ambiguity around uh, lot boundaries.
You should, you shouldn't be required to get the survey, but if there is a dispute, then there's a dispute.
Yeah. But maybe, but, but maybe watching out for kind of distance from uh, those kinds of criteria. That might trigger that sort of conversation. So just a.
How do we feel about that, Matt? That was good uh, feedback for fences and walls.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um, all right, can I, should I jump to lighting? Yes, I'm gonna assume that's a yes. Um, so next item is on outdoor lighting. Um, the current code has some regulations, you know, that are intended to reduce impacts of lighting on neighboring properties. That apply in commercial and industrial zones, but not really with enough detail to be particularly effective in our um, estimation. We do recommend additional outdoor lighting standards that would um, shield um. Lighting from adjoining properties that would um, that would, you know, direct lighting downward. Um, and we are recommending including some of the types of dark sky approaches that one of the commenters mentioned earlier. Um, and applying um, the, those approaches to requiring lighting plans for future commercial, industrial, mixed use. And multifamily or multi-unit development. So want to get your take on that and you heard some of the comments um, earlier on from. Um, the person who spoke, Mr. Hendricks, I think um, before the work, work session got started. So just thoughts on outdoor lighting standards and I guess any thoughts on dark skies standards.
I think that what you put in here uh, was a great starting point, but I really would also like to see additional. Dark skies, specific guidance to be considered. I was thinking about the section last night at eleven o'clock at night laying in bed. While the neighboring office building parking lot lights were shining in my bedroom for no apparent reason. Uh, so I think this is more important than probably people think it is if they think about it at all.
Agreed. I'm all for uh, dark skies. Go for it.
I, I'm definitely all for protection of other people's private property. Um, and when it comes to li- light flooding into somebody's bedroom. Um, the only thing that I am hesitant about with some of the darks, dark skies is that. I think we have to take into consideration that we are not a big city, but we are a city. Um, and some of the dark sky stuff is, you know, maybe that, that belongs at the county level or in more. Not within the city limits, but uh. I am also would love to be able to see all the, all the stars within the city, but I, I don't know that that's. What makes sense for a city.
Situation and I don't know if you can differentiate between one piece of property and the next with, I mean, it's. Like our building downtown is lit up like a, I mean, it's like a spotlight everywhere. And there's no one living next door or across the street or anything. So it's, I don't think it's bothering anybody, but we've gone without lights and had. You know, people sleeping down below and trying to break in and, you know. You know, just people sleeping in our place structure and just, you know, we have cameras so we can see what's going on. So we had to put more lights up for that purpose.
Yeah.
But if we, if anyone was living next door and, you know, our lights were shining in their windows, we'd probably mitigate the light somehow and then. Out on May Street, a block from me, Mike Kettler had to put up a, they made him put a street light on, up where it was nice and dark out there. I look out my window and I think there's a full moon every night. It's that bright. It's just like, and Frank across the street from him just. I mean, Frank Lemon, I mean, I can't believe what he has to put up. It's really bright.
Yeah.
And it's not shining down. It's just like the whole neighborhood.
That, that, that's the type of thing that I mean, to have protection from.
Well, I mean, you need, the lights are not a problem. It's just the, the way it's designed and. I think there's lights out there that make a lot more sense than just, you know, lighting up the whole, you know, two, two square blocks. Yeah, that's all. Yeah.
So with the, one thing that we're looking at is, you know, the applicability of, of these standards. You know, we have street standards and those requirements. Um, are there circumstances where you want to include or enforce? You know, residential versus commercial versus multifamily. Um, you know, there, there's some of these things. Do you want to administer this down to the individual dwelling units? You know, backyard, or is there a limit that you recommend that we, that we apply like? That we don't apply. Cause some of these things, when it comes to land use applications, they will require submission of lighting details. Of, you know, lighting experts. If, if you want to mitigate spill over lighting offsite, we will have to. Put that forward. At, at what point do you want to require those things? And at what point do you want to uh, have this? No, is there, is there a roll off of application to where it's, we have recommendations maybe for individuals? Uh, and then we have requirements for larger format. Do you have any, any sense? New applications, commercial applications, industrial applications?
Or any street application, right? That you get out of at least about lights bulb or. That's what it makes sense. I mean, from, from, you know, from here on out, you just make it, get the most in, on impactful. Street lighting you can get for, you know, for spillover purposes.
Sorry, that was streets and commercial?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, no, I just, I.
It's the voice. I mean, it's all the dark side, right?
You're just, you know, keep the, try to keep the light going down instead of out to the sides.
My, like, Mike hit the nail on the head with the light that is super annoying to me. I'm like, why did someone have to put this in? That's the one, that Mike had to put out front of the house on May Street, like, and that was a requirement by engineering? Is that, this is a question for staff.
Of the street. It, Bill, it depends on the street. We're talking about May Street, correct?
Yep.
Um, and whether or not it's in, in, yeah, whether it's inside the city limits or outside in the county's jurisdiction. But I think you're talking about a spot that's inside the city limits. So the city does have standards for street lighting. And uh, we work with Pacific Power, um, who provides the specs that are available. So.
And, and owns and operates the lights.
It's true. Yeah.
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of weird that we're trying to deal with dark sky stuff and then, you know, we're just these giant streetlights are flooding everything. I don't really get it.
Well, and, you know, I think, like a main thoroughfare, you know. Some light is likely needed throughout. If it's in the city, if it's a commercial zone and somebody lives next to a commercial zone, I'd say that, you know. The expectation that it's going to be more lit up because you're next to a commercial zone should be understandable, similar to. You know, being in a residential zone that neighbors EFU uh, standard orchard practices is. Something that's, you know, they can't, you can't sue over. And so it's like, you know, light versus. The occupational hazards. It's, I think, kind of a good analogy of. What to expect if you're, you know, if you're on twelfth street, you know. In, in the heights district and you don't want it to be dark. It's like, well.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm not against streetlights. I'm against the type of street light that would. Would it would spill over unnecessarily if you don't have to have that? That's all.
Yeah.
So.
If we just get it to those. That's just, yeah. A certain angle of cover.
Well, they have, they have that. Yeah, yeah.
So there, there's the, the public domain in the streets and those are really our standards that we set and in combination of pack power. Uh, there's also then the pub, the private domain. So when someone develops their site, I think, you know, we. We have, we have kind of two different animals here. Um, so on the public side, I clearly hear you all requesting that. The street lighting that we use up within our domain be a little more subdued. Um, on the private side, really you have one generalized statement that says generally lights won't be bad. They will not spill over. That is, that is, provides zero. Well, one, on the residential side, it's completely unenforceable. You can't enforce it one minute. Um, on the resident, on the commercial side, you see instances where unnecessary glare is. Varies based upon, you know, the person's own individual needs. Um, having some standard of approach um, starts to provide some, provides common level of expectation. So um, you know, Kevin and I have used um, some of the manuals for the Illumination Engineers Society. They start to vary based upon, is it a residential zone? Is it a commercial zone? When it hits, when the two collide, what do they look like? It provides some standardization and science on how much is too much. And how much is really kind of sufficient. Um, you're providing some base, we, we have a recommendation, you provide some baseline and some common. Ground for, for these circumstances, rather than just leave it up to everyone's own interpretation.
I would like, I would like that in the residential zones, required lighting is not. Coming on to private property. coming on to private property. Like if we have to put streetlights up in residential zones, I don't think someone should be burdened with the street light beaming into their front yard.
That'd be kind of
And I, and I see that happening now.
You can mitigate that a little bit with the direction of the light going down, but I don't know if you're ever going to be able to completely eliminate that. That's a pretty, that'd be, that'd be like a
The height of the light off the ground, the direct, the angle of the light, like.
Yeah, there's, there's things you can do. Yeah, you're right. You're right. That, I don't know if you could, I don't know.
Cause a lot of those ones are, they're 30 feet up in the air and they're just go, they are generally aimed down, but they're so high that they go, you know, two thirds, you know, 20 feet into the front yard.
There should be a way to funnel the light down in a, in a reasonable manner.
And I, I think more of this is actually going back to this, I mean, the issue that I'm talking about is required light, lighting that's being required by the city. So maybe if we're, I don't know if people have this opinion, but this would be a feedback loop to get this into some sync up with engineering standards.
Now, um, nine, nine and 10. Yeah. Nine, 10. Matt, I think you, you have a parking discussion for residential parking.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Yeah. So these are the last two items. They're both related to parking. So parking, the current zoning code requires two parking spaces, and this is what is required as a minimum per single dwelling, two spaces per duplex and townhouse unit, one and a half per multi-unit or multifamily dwelling unit. You know, there's a lot of discussion around how the cost of providing parking impacts housing costs. We want to acknowledge that. State requirements over the years, over the last several years in particular, have been for cities over a certain size to reduce how much parking cities can require, particularly cities over a certain size and cities in the Portland metro area. And the state does not allow cities to require additional parking spaces for accessory dwelling units. So we're just kind of acknowledging all that and asking a fairly general question of, you know, what, what feedback or input do y'all have for the city council as we think about updates to parking requirements for residential uses? Did I get that? Get that right, Dustin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looking for input.
Yep.
Guess what? I have a comment.
Shocked. I almost beat, I almost beat you to it.
Well, the one specific comment I have is we've, we've gone down to a single dwelling, a single parking space for middle housing or units that are under 1,200. And most multi-unit dwellings, like apartments are going to be smaller than that, right? We're going to have five, 400 square foot studios. We're going to have eight hundred square foot two bedrooms. You can do all that in middle housing with one parking space. And here we're requiring one and a half. Or at least we currently do. I'm on 104, page 104, multi-unit buildings. I think that should, my opinion is that should be lower, should be point seven, five or one.
For what dwellings?
Multi dwell, multi-unit dwell.
Okay, right. Like an apartment house. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, an apartment house, we can, you can do a cottage, like, and you can do middle housing, you can do a 500 square foot cottage and you have to do, you can do one part, one bedroom cottage and you can do one parking space. If you do a 300 square foot apartment, you have to have one and a half parking spaces.
Where are those?
Those units.
Are they building some?
Yeah, but the unit, the units right behind, I'm running across this because I'm looking to try and do an apartment. But this is the requirement, like the units that are up behind Nunnamaker up Clearwater. Like those, any, any, any new apartment buildings are going to be.
Those are that small. Wow. Okay.
Well, I mean, you're not, you're not 400, 600. I mean, you're not, you're not building 1,200 square foot apartments usually right now.
Yeah, I think point, point well taken. Yeah. Other thoughts about this one, parking requirements for residential generally, or specifically to different types of units?
Yeah. Well, the only other question I have is for me, a duplex and a townhouse, at least in Hood River, are realistically kind of the same thing. Or, or they, they have the same form factor pretty often. We don't have a lot of over, under duplexes. There's, if we have any, they're side by side and they're really look just like a townhouse. So I'm, I'm wondering why they would be different. I don't know what I think they should be, but I don't know why they should be different.
Well, wouldn't a townhouse be one dwelling and duplex be two? And even though they're, they share the same amount of space, likely you would have more inhabitants. So likely they might need more cars.
Well, a townhouse is not freestanding, it's attached.
Right. Same.
Yeah. Cur, I think that we, we evaluate this as per unit. So a duplex comprised of two units, a townhouse typically comprised of two units. So this, this two per is per unit. So a duplex requires four. A townhouse comprised of two individual fee simple lots also requires four. So currently the code does not differentiate between the two.
This, this code is differentiating, or at least the one I'm looking at on one of, page 104. And I was wondering why they were different.
I think what we're looking at Dustin is a, the state requirement for the one parking space per duplex is in this code that presenting.
Yeah, that's built, that's changing state law.
Okay. Which gets, seems weird that that's less than our one and a half per for multi-family dwellings.
Good idea.
So what is presented there is what you have and what is required by state law? We are asking, do you want something different? It sounds like there's some thing that maybe you do. That, that one and a half, maybe it is one space per unit across the board, but that's the feedback we're looking for.
Definitely for the multifamily, be great to have a,
I mean, one, I feel like would be sufficient per unit, especially considering that we want to have as many dwelling units as possible.
And then you get into lot coverage and it starts to get tricky.
Parking is, anyway you look at it, I mean,
Yeah.
No matter what you build, it's, it's just, there's no, there's no, there's no happy way to deal with it.
Yeah. Don't, the thing that I, I just try to think of it practically is that typically you would have the zoning, you would have an apartment complex in. It lends itself to not necessarily needing a car. You know, you might be able to get around on a bike.
One would hope, yeah, for sure.
Well, just based on zoning, you know, like where, where you can do that.
Those are two amenities. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And so, you know, you're not gonna, the small, especially the smaller units can get away with the one, like if you have a studio that's, you know, what did you say? 400, 3 square, 300 is small, but you know, four, 500, it's.
No, I, I, I don't like paving for parking. It's just a necessary evil.
Yeah.
If you try to mitigate it the best you can or try to make a, you know, make a nice balance.
Did you say it was a state?
For duplex.
The categories are a little strange here that duplex is one. Multifamilies, one and a half. It seems like if you're going to do duplex at one, why can't you?
I mean, multifamily and townhomes down to one as well.
Yeah, you could. And that's kind of the question. Duplex, you can't require more than one. So per the state, but the state allows you as the city of a size you are to require more. And that's what we're asking. Yeah. Do you want to require less?
Detached, single family, maybe that's two, one and a half. I think we should do that one as well.
Reduce it as much as possible. I agree with Bill on the multifamily and the comments made about where they're built. And how, I, I feel like we do a lot of planning for parking, like with, without a consideration for what the future of transportation in our city looks like. And we're planning for things that exist now. And I think that that is foolish, in my opinion.
I, I, I always, yeah, I always thought that.
Like.
Okay. So I'm getting, I'm getting it for the sake of time.
Yeah.
Four of you that think multifamily should be one, based around the state's preemption of a duplex being one in the city's own most recent code for middle housing that was one per.
Yes.
And townhomes as well, Dustin?
Hey, I have a question about, yeah, I, yeah. So the question, yes, I, I would say townhouses as well, similar to duplexes, in my opinion.
What, what, are there any townhouses or duplexes that don't have garages? I mean, are, is that pretty, I mean, so that, so that was one of the comments that someone had on the side of this parking thing. If, do you want to use a garage as a parking spot? And then the driveway going up to the garages, I built a million houses like that. One out of 50 people use that garage for their car.
It's a garage.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not saying don't take, I'm saying don't take that away, but it's just reality. I mean, that's, so if you're, you've already got a parking spot. You know, whether you have got an approach to the garage or to, including the garage, either have one or two and probably two. So you're kind of get, no matter what, you're going to have two. So you can say one, but what does that mean? You're going to not have a garage?
Alley loaded ones are where you don't always have a driveway in front of the garage.
Where you could, where you could not have a garage, you can park a car in, you could have a, you could have some, pull your car in and have a little four by eight storage area or something at the end of your driveway without a full garage.
Yeah, but people do want garages for the most part. I'm just saying, anybody who's building anything new for sure.
I, I agree, I agree with you, but I guess the question is what, what the market wants and it says, do we have to require it?
Yeah. I, I mean, it seems like we should, we can let the market decide what they want to do, but we, while the city also including some sort of backstop is, yeah, I think just one or
Yeah, here's, yeah.
Is enough. And if the builder wants to include more, which might make it more marketable, more power to them, but.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just stating that.
Set a baseline and.
I'm just stating you already have two.
Yeah.
That's all. And what are you going to consider the, the parking spot, the garage or the driveway?
Yeah.
If you don't have, you know, if you don't have a driveway, you've got a, you've got one parking spot and you're okay. So I don't know if that's any, anything that means anything. It's just.
I, I feel like we have pretty good direction on this one.
I got one quick question. Have you ever seen code that parking is based upon the size of a unit?
Yes.
I mean, you know, like, I'm thinking of the, I'm on the board of the community land trust and we're going to be building some units. And because of the way our development ordinances work, we might be going down the PUD route versus using our middle housing code. And if we did PUD and we made the units detached, we're going to have to provide in two parking spaces. For a 800 square foot cottage, unless we, we can get a 1537 exception for it. I think.
I, I think in that case you would just do the middle housing instead, right?
No, you, it, middle housing is just a bunch of reasons we don't want to do middle housing.
So Bill, are you advocating for us thinking about providing reduced parking requirements for smaller units regardless of weather? Okay.
Yes. That's exactly what I'm trying to say.
All right. Thank you.
You said better than I did.
All right. I'm, I'm going to ask, can, I, I feel like we've gotten good direction and good discussion on this one. And I'm going to suggest we move to another parking one, if that's.
Sorry, I just have one. So one more question. Sorry, just a clarification, maybe. Did, did we come to some opinion about also one for a single family? Like one per unit and that applies to single family as well? Or was that just a, did you?
I, I support that, but we don't have to all agree.
Like that, I mean, I support that as well. And I do think that the market will take care of, of that situation if it needs to. So I'm, I'm supporting that.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll help for diversity and product type.
One clarifying question.
Matt, and this Kevin, I'm going to jump in real quick with one question. I'm wondering if the commission's opinion on this would change at all if there were no on-street parking available? Based on street classification requirement for bike lanes, whatever the, you know, circumstances were, if you didn't have on-street parking, would your opinion change?
No. Personally.
Would be market driven, right? Yeah. They'd have to decide. You make a dumb decision, you're not going to sell.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Matt.
Do we get to move to number 10?
Let's go to 10.
Okay. Thank you. So this is the last one. This is related to commercial parking standards. So outside of a couple of zones there, outside of the waterfront district in the downtown, your current code standards for parking don't require a certain number of parking spaces per square footage of development. That is kind of a common practice in a lot of communities is to do it that way. But you allow for a fair bit of flexibility and you require somebody to say, here's how many parking spaces we need for our business. And, and sort of make the case and then provide that. So that does provide a lot of flexibility. It also makes it challenging for staff to evaluate, you know, whether that's the right amount or not. And the question is, do you want to stick with that approach or do you want to move to a more prescriptive approach where you require a minimum number of parking spaces per thousand square feet of floor area, and that varies by different types of businesses, which is kind of the way I would say most communities in the state do it. So what do you think about that? Keep the current approach or move to that more kind of measurable approach?
Somewhere in the code, I wasn't quite sure because I was going from code to code. I wasn't sure, but was there an approach where we had some standards, but the developer could also present an alternative parking plan to justify something different? Is it, was that the way I was reading the code or not?
Dustin will not be able to explain it. It's very ambiguous in the code. I mean, as, when I was reviewing it.
Yeah, the code, the code, but for those areas that have some count per square foot, which is the requirement basically says one for each of your employee and as many needed for your customers as, as are, as needed, which is unbelievably flexible. I mean, it's unlimited flexibility to, to tell your story. However, what it requires is exercise of discretion on behalf of, on behalf of the staff, which moves it into, it moves it out of clear and objective and something we can just do without sending it to the land use process. So the upside is it's incredibly flexible. The downside is in order to determine it's being true or not, we move it to land use. And so that becomes, that, that's just, that's the way it is. And it just becomes a little tricky. So in downtown, you went through a parking analysis, you did a full inventory of square footage vacancy rates. And you came away with 1.5 per thousand, which was the, the assumed demand. And then in the waterfront, you have restaurant, retail and basically industrial uses, and you have a rate that's set for each of them. So you have a mathematical rate.
I was, I'm trying to ask a question and to be, be more clear about my question, I guess. So when I was reading the stuff in the packet, I saw all the square footage allocated per uses. But then I thought I saw something where a developer had an opportunity in the event, they thought that their use, that there was some different need based upon the use type than, than what was stated that they had the ability to go through some formal process and present like a plan, not just made up, but by like an engineer.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Uh, I, we were, we were missing you. That, that's not in the current code, but in the packet on page 119, there's parking demand analysis, which allows them an opportunity for to make, to make their pitch.
Right. That, so that, that made sense to me. If we had some, some specific standards, but then if someone wanted to do something different or justify something different, they could go through a process to do it. That, that made sense.
And, and I will just note that a lot of cities, you know, either they have that or they have a kind of a numerical standard for most types of uses. But there's some types of uses for which they don't have a numerical standard because it is, it, it can vary a lot. So I'll say like for certain types of public facilities, like a pump station or a wastewater treatment plant or things like that. pump station or a wastewater treatment plant or things like that, there is no numerical standard per thousand square feet because it doesn't make sense, and in those cases, the applicant does just what you described and what the code potentially could allow for, and that's to show their own demand analysis. So often you'll have that situation for certain types of uses where it doesn't make sense to specify, but for most types of uses, you've got some kind of numerical standard, but yeah, you can have the ability to kind of come in and make your case if if you think, you know, those standards don't really fit your situation very well.
Does the suggested code allow for users to buy parking spaces?
We've got existing provisions in place for the in lieu parking fee, is that what you're referring to? We had some testimony about that a little bit earlier tonight, so existing code does allow for certain types of development, developer to buy their way out of the parking requirement by paying a fee, yes.
And that would continue with this code.
Yeah. And I would recommend, I would recommend that that stand code is specifically for downtown to where Oak Street, Cascade, and a vast majority of Columbia, everything built within the first hundred and ten years of this city and the historic district was built without parking to not force the issue of requiring them to only provide on-street parking to satisfy their redevelopment, to give that flexibility, I will, you know, in defense of downtown, in that respect, I will absolutely recommend a fee and loo for that. The other option is to require no parking downtown. I mean, and that, and that is, that may seem radical now, but prior to two thousand six, there was no required parking within central business district, and it and it built out in the way it did because of that, so. You know, fee and loo now has been used various states of, you know, success. But it is a program that that provides an option other than providing, than paving or or nothing, it's, to me, it's something in the middle. And really, it's up to, you know, the fee determines its strength. Do you want to make it more strict? The money goes up, do you want to reduce its its impact, you know, it's it's kind of variable based on amount, so. Yeah, I I will absolutely make that recommendation to staff to maintain that program, especially for downtown. Yet they, we've heard in the past is that without that provision, you basically suggesting to the developer they should tear down historic buildings to provide parking.
Question, is there any methodology behind the way the in lieu fee is set? Unrelated to this, but it seems like that's, that's gonna be a pointed issue in our upcoming discussions.
Yeah, downtown, downtown, it was based upon when the demand was set for the amount of spaces per thousand, we calculate the number of spaces required based upon what the blend of downtown was, and that's the rate for for in lieu. And then the study also included basically what what the city was assessing and what the the outcome was for the for the developers, which helped inform the rate at the time, or in twenty nineteen anyway.
Does the rate change as land becomes more valuable?
The rate can change every single year based upon the adoption of fee schedule.
In our current ordinance, or at some point in our ordinance, there was a requirement that fifty percent of the parking was provided for and fifty percent could be in lieu. Is that accurate?
Not in the past decade, at least, to my knowledge.
Okay.
In lieu?
Hundred, hundred percent.
I mean, it make, to me, it makes sense for a downtown business district.
No choice, you tear down old buildings.
Yeah, I mean.
Make parking.
It doesn't really function as a proper city. Don't make people walk some distance if during the congested time, you know, drop offs, things like that.
So it's in place in the heights as well, or is that?
Fee, fee and loo is available in the heights as well, so really, the city, the three areas are the waterfront, urban renewal zone, the heights and and the central business district are are the three zones that are eligible for fee and loo.
Sorry, what were the downtown, the heights?
And waterfront.
Oh, gotcha.
Perfect.
So commercial parking rates, some sidebars, but also unlimited or an opportunity for the developer to argue their case, so in in this, the demand analysis was something. It does become a land use decision at that point, I mean, that's just. Any, any input on how to how to balance this?
Well, I I suppose outside of the districts that you pointed out, we do have requirements, right, so like if for instance, like the where Rosar is, is there's requirements there that would not be eligible for in lieu?
Uh, I don't believe, outside the district, but however, that use really doesn't have a set mathematical formula. As they're required for the number, they basically, the code says, you need to provide as many as needed for your customers.
Or pay in lieu.
Uh, they can't pay in lieu because they're not in the district. Yeah.
Same with like.
Safeway.
Safeway and beyond, and. Beyond on, that's Cascade.
Uh, rates are basically determined by demand and 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 calculated and argued every single time.
Yeah, and I mean, I think anybody that's gonna be in business in whatever area, commercial area, I think it's, we can kind of leave it up to them what they think they need, and I think people will either go there or not, based on the convenience or lack thereof and.
You talked about, when you said rates, you mean in lieu rates, or what do you mean?
I'm sorry, the parking rates, the rate of parking.
But it sounds like the recommendation from the team is more structure. And like, staff would would appreciate more structure.
Correct. That's, that's the.
But yeah, it's some, some structure is good, or, I mean, really, if you're, if you're gonna say the developer has to come up with the number, I mean, that that's also you know, not unpre, it wouldn't be an unprecedented position for cities to say, listen, you have, we're, we're not gonna mandate the number, it's not gonna be in public opinion, that is up to you to figure out, and if you need a hundred spaces, you're gonna provide us a hundred, and if you think you can get by with zero, you're gonna that's up to you. So that's not, that's not unusual.
Problems that are, that you see that are being created from the current scenario. People are underestimating, people are overestimating. You know, uses change slightly and parking is inadequate, things are spilling out onto the public. Parking, like, what's the problem we're solving here?
Well, I think the, I think some of the issues you know, we're, we're starting to increase the density of housing, which which puts pressure on the street, at the same time, trying to not build overly sized, overly large sized streets in the name of livability. And that's, that's real tension. I mean, on the commercial side, you know, we drive further away and probably drive more than we have in the past, which is an unfortunate circumstance. We see tens of thousands of more visitors every weekend than we have in the past through longer points of the year. But we also are trying to not turn our town into parking lots, so there's that tension of of accommodation and 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 convenience, and you see the shift in technology. You know, the advent of more autonomous vehicles, you see a push for mass transit. You know, here, but also the limited availability and the struggle to provide it in a small town, so these are all the things that we're looking for you the, to provide input and and from your perspective on, you know, there is no, there's no perfect outcome here. But.
To the commission, do we feel like that's something that the city needs to have a heavy hand in, or is that something that we think that the market can decide on its own?
You have to have a balance between developers just saying, forget it, I can't do that. And go and and make it a reasonable option for them, which is, be a little more flexibility. I would say, and let, like, you know, let the developer come up with a plan and run it by the city, and you guys are giving some, putting some flexibility on here, or the idea to make it not flexible, just this is what it has to be.
On the commercial side, there is flexibility.
Okay, well, that's what we're talking.
So so we have, we have options to to take this from, you know, that are, that are much broader than the residential side.
But you, you have to write into the code something specific, or can you write into the, can you? Is the code gonna be flexible? Or do you want it to not be flexible?
That's, that's, that's the comment you guys are asking of us.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's flexible, it's flexible right now, right, on, on.
You're trying to make it less flexible, is that the whole, is that?
Do we want less, less flex?
We're, we're, we're curious in the opinions of folks in the community, including the commission council. If, if if I'm evaluating a development application and I'm just taking the plans in front of me because the developer put it there with no justification for the number of parking spaces, is that okay? That's how it exists today.
Yeah, well, that's, you guys have to deal with that, we don't deal with that, so we.
Well, you may, you, we, we.
One of your death first, so you guys, you know, I can't tell, I don't see, I don't see what you guys see, I hear about, but yeah, that's a good point.
But there's also predictability too, you know, that's, this is the balance of a predictability versus versus flexibility, we, you know, we, we can take for, you know, we don't want to take for granted that whatever information that's provided to us is is the gospel and can be trusted on every time, we want to provide scrutiny because there are circumstances where certainly the applicant or developer says, this is sufficient amount of parking for our use, this is great. And those people who are surrounding that area saying, this is absolutely ridiculous, you are going to spill parking over outside this news, it'll never accommodate. Those are that, that tension of interest that we are trying to somewhat adjudicate and and give those those folks at least some, some level of of expectation here.
Right now, it's. Right now, it's it's nebulous, I mean, you're right, you're, you're trying to get it a little more specific, so you don't have to deal with. You know, so it's not as flexible, I, I mean, I, you guys deal with this stuff all the time, I'm. Take your comments and your.
My, my direction or my comment would be that I like the flexibility and would like to continue to have the in lieu. If, if we want to grow as a city and accommodate as many people as possible, there's, there's gonna be some level of give and take and the people who are closer to the commercial zones might see a little bit of impact on the streets in terms of parking, but I think that's part of. A growth. Yeah. So I guess my vote would be for continued flexibility and in lieu.
But that's, that's. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I would just, I, I guess individually for giving you guys the tool you need to do your job, and if you, if you need and want more structured to do your job effectively, I, I'm, I support that.
That's kind, that's kind of what.
Just express that it's, that it's, you know, nebulous and challenging and difficult and ambiguous, and those are all things I don't want to see.
That's what I was trying to say a minute ago, I agree, I agree with that.
Sure, yeah. Okay, so it's some level of structure that's supportable, we're not pushing the parking mandates to a suburbanized level, we're also not just taking anyone's word for it, somewhere, somewhere in between the two. Perfect.
Maybe so, then I could go to a cost official.
But with that, with that option of you to decide.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Matt.
All right. Excellent work, I'll say, getting through all ten of those, there's a lot of meaty topics, so thank you. So kind of just a real quick review of next steps before we finish up here, one is to take the same, you know, set of provisions for module four and the feedback we got from you to the council, we'll be doing that next week and talking through that with them, and then updating modules three and four. So in each case, we're updating the individual modules, then we're putting them all together into a consolidated code, so those are really kind of our next two steps with the code, but before we finish putting together that consolidated code, we also want to get some more feedback from community members, other community members on some of these questions, so we're doing these brief questionnaires over the next kind of couple of months while we're working on updating and consolidating the code, and then also conducting these interested party meetings that I mentioned and proposing to do that in the first half of December, and then another one in January, so that's what's ahead of us, so it'll be a little while before we're back in front of you because that is all gonna take a little bit of time, so we don't have, I don't think we have the next meeting with y'all scheduled, but we'll be working on doing that over the next month or so, is putting together a schedule for that, so that's all I have for you. Anything else, Kevin or Dustin?
Let's say we have a. Sorry, I'm neither of you. We do, we do have a, one more bit of additional feedback from, from the public. If everyone is, can hang in there for just a little longer.
Great.
Oh, please state your name.
Tina McNerney, Hood River.
Resident, obviously, I just wanted to comment on the outdoor lighting, street lighting specifically. I have experience just being in homes that have extremely bright street lighting. It's very disruptive to sleep, it's very disruptive to animals, and a few things that I've read about that can mitigate it in addition to projecting the light downward and potentially not making it quite as tall are timed dimmers, motion detection, I wanted to, I know that that is more costly, but it is much more helpful for wellness to have and safety that the lights are motion detection, so that's something I wanted to advocate. Also, the, the transition from the sort of the yellow lights that you've all seen to the bright blue, white, super LED crazy lights that are, they're very bright. You know, there are other options of different colored LEDs as well that they do use in communities that are with dark sky friendly and otherwise, so I just wanted to really advocate for some change to street lighting. It is very disruptive in, the more we get dense housing that we are looking, that we want to encourage, that in particular makes it even more of an issue. So I wanted to say that, I also wanted to advocate for a look back period for street trees. In my neighborhood, there are people who regularly chop down street trees and leave stumps, and there's been absolutely nothing that you can do, or there hasn't been any enforcement of that, you know, take down tree, replant a tree. And I would, you know, generally support more structure for street plantings and the inability to just take down a tree without a permit and without a repression, I would also support a look back period of a number of years so that you could issue, you know, you could have people who, they have, it's very clear, they have stump sitting in their, their street. I call, what do they call that, the?
Plant strip.
Plant strip, that you go back and make them like street tree, I also would advocate for a street tree program that we could subsidize mildly in the city, whether it be for all people or a low income. Street trees are very expensive, they can be, if you want the required, you know, three or four, I don't know the exact, four per foot. You're talking hundreds of dollars, and if there's something that we could do as a city, my neighbors complain about the price, if there's a way that we could advocate for a program or collect a program, or work with a community group to get more affordable trees, I think that would be also really good.
All right, thank you, Tina. Okay, anything else?
That's minutes.
Okay, all right, well, that's the conclusion of our work session this evening.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Gary.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, last thing, meeting minutes from February third, twenty twenty five, has everyone reviewed these meeting minutes? Those of you that were there? Not?
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
I guess my only question is, should I vote?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, although you were not commission members, as long as you don't see anything that would get your attention, totally fine.
Okay, well, if not. No, you just have to, okay, can we get a? No, you just have to, okay, can we get a, a, a motion to, okay. All right, for a second?
Second.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, everyone in favor? Okay, everyone approves? Uh, and now it's time to adjourn the meeting at, what time is it? Eight.
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five, thank you, thank you, everyone.